Good morning, good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting in order. I apologize for being a few minutes late, but did make it in record time for Red Bank, that's for sure. Sunshine notice, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by publication and home news and Tribune. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
Mr. Zangara?
Here.
Mr. Andrews?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Here.
Mr. Vito?
Here.
Mr. Zalinski?
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Great. Everyone should have a copy of the January 14th minutes in their packet. If there's no questions, motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. There's no memorializations this evening, and we do have one carried application, so it's Builders Pro, 958 Edwin Street, minor subdivision.
(inaudible) table tonight?
The table would be great, sure.
Any notice on the building further? Last time was no further notice, I just don't know.
Do we need to swear in?
Is he?
But has the notice?
Previously sworn in.
Fletcher, if the previous is sworn in.
And the notice is still, we're good with the notice?
On this particular one, Janice, this is the one we don't need notice, this is carried, so we're okay with notice on this one?
Okay.
Okay. I'll just do a reminder about the oath.
So there was proper notice.
Okay.
If you would, one of mine, just to reintroduce yourself to the pass viewing public and go forward.
I'm Dominic Cerminero, and I represent Builders Pro on this application. Mr. Stein, we're just waving at each other, we've had trials.
Speak into the microphone. You can move that, slide it forward or use the other one.
Dominic Cerminero, I represent Builders Pro on this application. As Chairman indicated, this is a continuation of a previous meeting, and as such, there has been an amendment to the plans, which have been submitted to the board. The amendment essentially goes from a three-lot subdivision to a two-lot subdivision, and that came about reminding the members of the board that there was a discussion concerning the density of this area, and whether or not it was more suitable for a two-lot subdivision or a three-lot subdivision. We've taken the recommendations of the board, considered them, and in fact, we now agree. And we've amended the application to be a two-lot subdivision, which would leave a remaining house which is there in a new buildable lot. The new lot would be a totally conforming lot. The existing lot with the existing house would require five variances, two bulk variances, two of which already exist. So it would be, in essence, three additional to the two that exist on the lot. That house, as you may remember, is occupied. The amended report by the engineer has been reviewed, and I'm going to, at this point, ask Mr. Fletcher to comment on the engineer's report. I'm going to let Mr. Fletcher at first start, and then I think we're going to get into a little bit more depth as to the effects of drainage on these, the proposed two lots. I'd call Mr. Fletcher.
Mr. Cerminero, just before we get started there, my understanding is that Mr. Fletcher was previously placed under oath?
Previously placed under oath.
Okay.
Do it again if the-
No, that's okay, just a reminder, sir, you're under oath, and that still carries over from the last time that you testified.
Understood.
And qualified.
We accept his call.
Thank you. Yes, the subject property, 958 Edwin Street, Lot 5 in Block 152. It's on the corner of Edwin Street and Truman Place. It has 200-foot of frontage along Truman, 50-foot of frontage on Edwin Street. There's an existing one-story, sorry, two-story, single-family home right at the corner, and the applicant proposes to subdivide the property to create a 50-by-100-foot lot that will have the existing home on, and a 100-by-100-foot lot that would have the proposed new two-story single-family dwelling. The application does involve several variances. For Lot 502, the corner lot, 5,000 square feet lot area versus the 9,000 square feet that's required for a corner lot in the R4 zone. Secondly, lot width, 50-foot is what's proposed, required is 90 feet for a corner lot in the R4 zone. Essentially, that's an existing condition. Principal building setback, there's a front yard setback of 6.7 feet, and that is an existing condition. And lastly, there is a, an accessory, sorry, two more, accessory building side yard setback where 5 is required, 3.7 is existing, that's for the garage. And lastly, we have what I would call a de minimis variance requested for lot coverage by buildings, 25.8 versus the 25% allowed in the R4 zone.
I want you to get first. Fletcher, would you address the actual support?
Yes, I'll speak to the report by CME Associates dated January 21st, 2020. Skipping to his comments on page three, I believe the section on Sony issues, I've essentially gone over, I concur with his comments, I've already described those variances. He asked for testimony to justify the variances, I would prefer to save that for the closing.
Yes, continue, please.
Sure. Subdivision and RSIS issues, Section 3, A1, there's a typo that needs to be corrected, we will do so. Two, ask for architectural plans, they will be submitted. Number three talks about the sidewalk, we are requesting a waiver.
That includes curbs?
Yes, sidewalk and curb. There is no sidewalk or curb along Truman Place, so we would think it would be more appropriate to maintain that same character. Number four asks for the size of the existing sanitary sewer line, which is 8-inch and would be shown on revised plans. Five, we would certainly provide the deed descriptions for CME's attorney, or sorry, the CME and the planning board attorneys review prior to filing them. We will provide all certifications required by the map filing law, as asked in Lot 6.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can we ask if there's anything they object to as opposed to going over each item? If you're in agreement with, we've all, we've all have the CME memo, if you're in agreement with their technical recommendations for changes, that's fine, just tell us, does any, we normally do, just tell us if there's anything you object to or you want to clarify, or anything you have to elaborate on?
That is the way we work, by way too first.
That was the way you were going?
Okay. Well, I'd just like to touch on two topics. Firstly, under Section V Utilities, Note 2, they're asking, the engineer is asking that all utilities be installed underground.
Could you address the electrical hookup to this property and explain why the underground would not be appropriate for this property?
The electrical connections in the neighborhood are all overhead, the buildings that Mr. Ginsburg has constructed on Edwin Street, just across the street, are also overhead. Cannot guarantee that he could force PSENG to provide underground service, so we would prefer to keep that out of the requirements.
So that PSENG is the one who makes the ultimate determination as to whether or not it is underground or overhead, correct?
That's my understanding.
They cannot be directed in either direction, it's based upon their own engineers and their own plans.
Is that the way you understand it?
Without giving, without giving an opinion on that, and being in the business, PSENG will do underground or overhead, it's the property owner's choice, so, because the property owner is responsible for running the lateral out to the street, so, in the case of an underground service. So it's not a matter of PSENG saying you can't do it, it's a matter of choice.
Well, if I may, not disagree with you at all, but there was an inquiry made of PSENG, and they, my understanding was, indicated that final decision, maybe a choice can be selected, but the final decision would be PSENG. Maybe we're saying the same thing, but semantically.
I mean-
Would the CME, what they believe?
Okay, we'll agree to disagree.
I would suggest that they talk to PSENG about doing it underground, if PSENG refuses, they could get something from PSENG to demonstrate to the board that-
Right.
They insist.
Yeah, if they say they won't do it.
But, but are there, are there other, you testified that all the other hookups in the neighborhood, every other house, is an above-ground connection in the neighborhood?
That's my understanding.
And the lot.
Your understanding, or that's what you know from being there?
I have been there, I know for a fact that the homes recently constructed by Mr. Ginsburg are above-ground, I know that for sure.
It also indicates the pole, electrical pole is located directly in front of this lot, is that correct?
There is a-
(inaudible).
Yes, there is one there.
That's all, all the more reason an underground wouldn't be a problem, you're not crossing the street.
But why, what's-
I think our, I think our engineer's suggestion is sensible, if, if PSENG says they won't do it, just get us a letter from PSENG saying they won't do it.
Yeah, I would-
That's acceptable, acceptable to the applicant.
If it can be done underground, we should do it underground, if PSENG refuses, then I think they could demonstrate that.
Fair enough.
Document from that.
The only other issue, I, I don't take issue with anything, I just wanted to explain the drainage situation. Right now, the, the topography directs all runoff from the whole lot towards the rear property line. We are introducing a new home and a driveway, essentially in the middle of the lot, we will be directing the runoff from the, the new home and the driveway to the storm sewer and to the street. So that represents 25% of the lot area, so 25% of the lot will not be flowing to the rear. I conclude that the flow to the rear will be reduced by 25%, and we will provide the reports as requested in the engineer's report.
So by directing the flow of that portion of the property to the storm sewer, what kind of impact does that have on the current flow rate, et cetera? Do you have any information on that, or you're going to supply that later?
I will supply it, but the, for 100-year storm, I believe my calculations were a net increase of .3 CFS.
Okay, thank you.
Give it a second.
So if I recall during the last hearing, I know I'm getting old, but drainage was an issue, correct?
Yeah.
That's correct.
So please tell me-
We're improving the situation.
You have something to show, you have an easel or something to put up to show us, and CME has, has calculations on what you, by reducing the house or whatever, how that's going to change? Do we have something like that?
I don't have anything to show you, no. But I would ask the engineer, do you agree that by, we're reducing the flow to the rear?
Lou, from John's report on page five, he indicates A1, no stormwater improvements are indicated as the plans, and no drainage calculations provided by the applicant. I think in the last hearing, we asked, you know, that, that information be provided to you so you can make an assessment on it. Do you know that that's been provided yet?
What John had indicated to me was, there was a request that the flow going towards the back of the property be decreased, or at least not be increased from existing conditions. So what they've done is they've graded the whole front yard and the driveway towards the street, and they've piped the leader drains for the roof all to the storm drainage system out in the street, so that there would be no increase going towards the back of the property. I think we still need calculations, though. Obviously, we're sending more water to the front, we're going to need a calculation that the storm drainage system can, can take that order.
So is the applicant testifying that you still don't have that information?
We haven't presented that information.
So that's, when you think that's the key piece of information that our engineers-
If I may, I think what Mr. Fletcher was indicating that, that, those actual calculations would be presented to the engineer subsequent with the explanation that his calculations are a 25% reduction, and that, that would be presented to the engineer for verification.
Well, that, that could be true, but, I mean, you've had a decent amount of time to make some, you know, very substantial revisions to the property by going to the two residences, and in that timeframe, I would kind of think you could, could have put that other stuff together and given them-
I apologize to the board.
-a response to one of their, you know, pretty high-level concerns.
I clearly misunderstood the, what was requested.
Well, it says, "No stormwater improvements are indicating on the plans, and no drainage calculations have been provided by the applicant." So to me, that seems to indicate that, that you did provide information which shows a change, but I think, I mean, I won't speak for them, but they probably would have liked to have gotten your, your calculations so they could review them.
Now, Lou, I know, I know you're here in place of John, but it, it's common that, I'm not talking about their, their submission now, but on most applications, CME is looking for, and a lot of times it's a condition, you know, proof that the storm, the, the pipes out front can take, can take the runoff, it's a, it's a condition, it's often a condition of approval. Clearly, I was under the impression, clearly that they were going to address the issue about runoff to the back and stuff like that, but I think, I think, Lou, it's fairly common that a condition of approval, and there is, I can't recall the time with the development where there was not a statement in there from, in John's memo, saying that you need to demonstrate that this capacity in the sewer line in the front for the, for the sanitary sewer, you need to demonstrate that there's adequate water, you need to demonstrate that there's adequate room in the pipes for the stormwater. Those are often conditions of, of approval.
It can be done that way.
Yeah. But the issue about clearly addressing, and I, I would like them to go back and state again, or clearly what you're doing, and the attempts to minimize everything to the back, our attorney said, our engineer said what you were doing, could you state again, and there are residents here, make clear what you were doing to reduce, you know, to put a positive statement on the record, if you are in fact reducing the runoff to the back, put that on the record, if you're not, then put that on the record, clearly.
I think I did, but I will re, I will say it again. We are reducing the area of land that flows to the rear by 25%, it's a quarter, and that area is being directed to the front of the property, to the existing storm system. So the, and I can provide the calculations, it's pretty simple.
And that should result in a 25% reduction?
It will be a 25, yes.
Of whatever the existing runoff is, that should result in a 25% reduction?
It will, it will result in 25% reduction in volume and rate to the rear.
Let me just jump in for a minute, because normally what happens is, we get this report from our engineers, as we have, and our engineers had a chance to review all your calculations and all your data, and so we have a high level of confidence based on that. We don't have that right now, when it comes to stormwater, and that is a very big issue. I agree with Mr. Zangara that we requested this before, and I am concerned, and I'm not impugning your truthfulness, sir, I just, I am concerned that we don't have anything other than your testimony that our engineers can look at, that, that's a big concern for me.
Well, if I may address that, as, it is not unusual that as a condition, they be submitted to the engineer, and the engineer at that point, subject to his approval as a condition, not unlike any other condition that is at times put for the, the engineer. Coupled with Mr. Fletcher's testimony as to the 25% reduction, I'm sure that that would be reviewed also as a condition of any approval, that that is in fact also the case from those approvals on the lot. In addition, though this is a very fundamental, we have, we have, Mr. Ginsburg has, after two days of rain, we have photographed the lot for the board to see what effect two solid days of rain have upon the lot. I'm going to ask Mr. Ginsburg at the end to submit that to the board, because I realize that the last time, there was some comments from the public as to the nature of this area after a rainfall. So that's also how we would address it, but as a condition, fully understandable and fully will be complied with.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, this can be handled as a condition, certainly if there was an issue with the calculations that we got, the applicant could come back to the board for further discussion, but these are, as Tom indicated, situations like this are generally handled as, handled as continuing conditions of approval.
Was there, I mean, am I missing, was there any new documents, or, I mean, this has a 1028, so this is from the last meeting, right?
No, the revised- There's a revised plan that was submitted-
Plan.
With just one of 10,000 square foot lot.
There's, there's two, two forms that we have in our packet, we have a drawing, one of two and two of two, they're both current revision 3, 1025. So if there's a 25% revision, then was 25% reduction, do we see the, the new elevations on these drawings, or haven't they been updated yet?
Sorry, the drawings have been updated, and if you look to the second page, you'll see the- If you look to the second page, you'll see the home that's proposed.
Okay, so the elevations that are on there are the new elevations, which are indicating the reduction that you're talking about?
They are the proposed elevations, the proposed grades, and there's a roof leader drain system that connects, shown with a dashed line connecting to the, to the storm sewer.
Yeah. So, so when you made the change, you just didn't update the revision block?
No, no, no. This, I'm looking at the same plan you are, 102519, revision three.
So are you testifying, you made the revision, are you saying you made the revision several days after you were before the board?
Yes.
You were before the board in October, correct?
Yes, and based upon.
Before the board in October, and the submission date in October reflects the changes, because the change, the decision to go from three lots to two lots was made within a couple days of our meeting.
Almost immediately after the meeting.
So that's why, that's the confusion, is that people didn't realize that, you know, looking at the October date, they didn't realize you made the changes right after the meeting.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were saying at that point.
Elevations don't seem right to me.
If I.
The front elevations are 98.1 and 98.3.
If I may.
The middle of the lot is 98.
Mr. Ginsberg, who is the principal of builders program, would like to address the board on this issue for a moment. With the board's permission, I'd like to call Mr. Ginsberg.
Was Mr. Ginsberg sworn in the last time?
I believe he was.
Yes, I did.
Okay, well.
Mr. Chairman, all members of the board, public, I guess it's a great night tonight, because we are getting to the very important point of our discussion, which is already like second time, is the drainage. I just wanted to point out only a few things. Number one, Mr. Fletcher, as engineer, was testified in here, and as I understand, he's, he was qualified as engineer. Number two, as I understand, we are discussing right now, so-called, and correct me if I'm wrong, so-called conditional approval, which to my common sense means that it's going to be conditioned, that Mr. Fletcher supposed to submit all calculation, if they are not going to show 25 percent reduction, then this application will fail. If his calculation will prove that 25 percent reduction, we are fine. I'm kindly asking board, Mr. Chairman, to consider that approach, that we're not requesting right now final unconditional decision. It's only a matter of calculation, which I believe Mr. Fletcher, as qualified engineer, saying to all of us that he will prove by his calculation, which will be revised by respectable CME engineering office, and/or agreed or rejected, and will be done, as I understand. That's actually all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
You've been before our board before, and you've, you've submitted some plans and things, and you've actually done some nice revisions to areas in our, in our neighborhood, and we've approved those in the past. And I certainly have high confidence in our engineering team that, that's represented us for many years, and I've worked with them closely, and they've always done a good job for us. The one thing that you may not be familiar with is, I mean, this is a quasi-judiciary board, okay, and we have people, as Pat is, an electrician, so that he can answer pretty articulately questions related to electrical installations, and some of us also have other experiences up here, so we can read plans and see things. So from a, just from my point of view, what you're not used to is, this particular board usually operates at a higher standard in reviewing plans and looking for information. So for the future, if you come in again, I mean, if I'm looking at a drawing that was revised in, in October, and I don't see very clear elevation changes, because I can read topographic drawings, and I see that the 99.7 is still 99.7, I don't see a 25 percent reduction, all right?
Understood.
So I'm fine with it being a condition of approval, because I, again, I have high confidence in my engineers that they're going to, they're going to make sure that they hold the applicant to a standard that, that we want, but when they have a note, and at the last hearing, when we were seeing members of the public coming up who live in the area, telling us specific things that they know, because they live it all the time, those are things we tend to pay very close attention to. And this was, as our chairman brought up before, this was an area of question last time. So we would clearly, all of us up here, like to see some of those changes made from October into February. So, you know, if it's a simple thing to make those changes, it would have been good to have them changed and already submitted that information to John. I really don't see a reason why that wasn't done. But having said that, I will, again, I have high confidence in my engineers that they're not going to let something that they don't feel is going to work correctly be built.
Understood. I appreciate it. I definitely will keep that in mind for my future application, if any will happen.
That's why we asked for many.
I'm giving you my word, and I'll keep my word.
That's why we asked for many sets of drawings for every member of the board to review.
Understood.
We go over with our engineer extensively at the workshop.
I apologize for misunderstanding, and it's not going to happen in the future.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I mean, I thought you guys probably could have done the calculations by now. Been in need three months.
Would have been nice.
Anything for your, I'd like to go back to the variances. Fletcher, as to the five variances requested in this matter.
Yes.
Can we speak up, please?
Yes.
So the five variances requested in this matter, comment as to the positive, negative impact of this application as a result of those variances.
Yes, I believe that the, the board can grant these variances under the C2 criteria, where the benefits outweigh the detriments. You see, the benefit being utilization of vacant space, providing a new home aesthetically pleasing for new citizens of North Brunswick. I don't see any detriments. We're taking a vacant piece of property and putting a home on it. With regards to the variances associated with the undersized lot that is being created, I believe it's quite in character with the neighborhood. I did prepare an exhibit, which I'd like to introduce.
I don't believe there have been any marks.
Has that, has, it's not been marked yet?
No, it's not been marked. Mark it as the A1.
Okay, has, do you have any previous exhibits that have been marked?
That's what I'm saying. Don't believe that they're happening.
P2, is that the last one?
As far as I know.
All right. It looks like we have an A1 or A2, so maybe make this one A3.
A3.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did a neighborhood analysis, and what you're looking at is a color-coded copy of the North Brunswick tax map, and I've indicated where the zone boundaries are, and I've just analyzed the properties in the R4 zone, within 200 and 300 feet. Within the 200-foot radius, there's a total of 25 properties. Thirteen of those are non-conforming. That represents 52 percent. There are 12 or 48 percent that are fully conforming. The yellow-coated, sorry, the orange highlighted properties are essentially identical to the, to the subject property that we're proposing, 50 by 100. There are two 62 and a half foot properties across the road where two single families were recently constructed. The green highlighted properties are two-family properties. Density is the same as the 50 by 100. They're essentially 100 by 100. One of them is 118 by 100. Within the 300-foot radius, there's a total of 34 properties, of which 18 are non-conforming, that represents 53 percent, and 16 are conforming, that represents 47 percent. And I bring this to your attention to, to show that creating the 50, 50 by 100 foot lot with the existing home is certainly not out of character with the immediate neighborhood, and I see that it would have no detrimental effects. It's also my opinion that the existing conditions that are, that are, variances are, are existing. The lot coverage variance, 28 point, 25.8 versus the 25, is, is de minimis in nature. I believe these variances can be granted without detriment to the zone plan or the master plan of the township.
Can I, can I just clarify for a minute? The, the section of this lot five that's adjacent to lot six is the existing, correct, where the existing residence is? And that the, the rest of the lot, the, I don't know how to describe it, we've got basically a rectangle and a square.
Yes.
Right? And so the square is where you're proposing the new building.
That's correct.
And the rectangle is where the existing structure is, and where the variance is basically, it's already existing. Am I correct in that assumption?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Just for the record, can you, because you indicated, you don't, the existing lot, or that lot with the existing house will only be 50 feet wide. Is there a house on the adjacent lot, lot number six? Is lot number six in the same block, in block 152, is there a house on lot number six?
Yes, there is.
Okay, so it's not vacant, so you can't acquire that?
We cannot acquire. There's no land to be.
So there's a, there's a building on that lot? Thank you.
The 50 foot wide was the existing lot with the existing house, correct? I have nothing further, Mr. Fletcher.
Can you maybe give us a synopsis of where we were and what we came from, so the public can understand?
Yeah, so, so just to sort of, to, to clarify the lay of the land, back in October, the application was for a three-lot subdivision. The one lot, the one lot, the lot fronting on Edwin had the existing house on it. Based upon comments from the board and comments from the public and concerns about drainage and density in the area, you came back, and the area that was going to be two 50-foot wide lots is now one 100 by 100-foot lot.
That's correct.
That's correct.
And with respect to drainage, you've represented, I want to make sure, you've represented that the grading for this new lot will be such that 25 percent of the, of that lot will, the elevation will be such that water will grade to Truman Place.
Correct.
Right. And, okay, the, the roof, the, none of the water that hits the roof will go towards the rear of the lot, that'll be picked up by the leaders and go out to Truman Place?
That is correct.
Okay. Will any of the water that hits the driveway go to the back of the lot?
No.
So every bit of water that hits an improved surface will go forward to Truman, and the overall lot will be graded so that 25, the front 25 percent of the lot will now, will now be, any water that hits anywhere in there will also go to Truman.
Yes.
Right. And you're prepared, you didn't do that calculation, but it's a simple enough calculation to do. If the board was to approve it that way, and you didn't document that, then you'd never get your plans signed, and didn't, you know, routinely we grant plans with conditions, but you'd never get, if, if what you said is not what your grading shows, then you'd never get your plans signed.
Understood.
May I add one more thing, which is to whatever you said right now?
Besides leaders, which will be run in the underground, in the existing storm sewer, there is also some pump in the basement, which lowering water table thanks to all static hydro pressure. So that pump will be underground drained to the existing storm sewer also, which even more will work towards reducing all water consist, existing conditions. So just.
That, that will be tied into the storm sewer.
Right, in the existing storm sewer, of course. Right. Thank you.
As opposed to the sanitary.
I'm sorry.
As opposed to the sanitary.
Of course. Not sanitary.
Does anyone from the board have any?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple things. I'm not going to go on about the drainage, but it doesn't look like anything's draining to the front on my drawing, but I guess our engineer will make sure that that happens. But I'm going to go back to one of our, one of our favorite subjects, which is sidewalks and curbs. I know people don't want to put the sidewalks in, they don't want to put the curbs in because they're not in the neighborhood. We've kind of made it a habit now to, when we're trying to beautify these neighborhoods and improve these neighborhoods, that we, we bring them up to a certain standard, which would involve sidewalks and curbs. The idea being that at some point, when other homes are renovated or other lots are improved, that those sidewalks will continue and will eventually have sidewalks and curbs throughout the neighborhood. So I have, I have a problem with this application not providing sidewalks and curbs.
If I may ask Mr. Fletcher to address that comment. Mr. Fletcher, in this neighborhood, you've indicated in your testimony that there are no sidewalks or curbs. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Was there any, any impact that having just one or two lots on the entire street, having a sidewalk and curb, as to pedestrians who would transgress from the grass onto a sidewalk, off the sidewalk onto the grass in these neighborhoods? Is there any impact of that occurring? And what would be the impact to pedestrians?
Well, it's conceivable that there could be some tripping hazards involved.
Because of the different elevation to the different type of nature of.
Different surfaces.
Of the grass versus the concrete?
Yes.
And there's no way of indicating or knowing at this point whether or not there would be any other homes which would be improved in the, in the future, or when that may take place, so that this condition you've indicated may exist for years, creating a tripping hazard, which you've indicated?
There's no, I have no indication or knowledge of any other homes that will be constructed. That's correct.
If you did, I was going to ask you who's going to win the World Series.
And then better.
But I, I mean, I appreciate his opinion, but I think most people are capable of transferring from a sidewalk to grass. I don't think that's a big issue. There is also curbing across a portion of the existing home where, where it comes around the corner. And, you know, I, I still feel it's necessary that we improve these, these properties.
I agree.
And I think, I think a sidewalk is part of that improvement.
I'm sure after we hear from the public, we're all in agreement that we like to see sidewalks and curbs.
Well, there's a, there's a depressed curb in front of the existing.
Yeah, correct.
I'm sure it's not going to be an issue. It's a condition of approval.
I agree with, with Mr. Malanson, and I was thinking, anytime our street improvement projects redo our streets, we always reduce side, we always put sidewalks in, and we always put curbing in if there's none there. Maybe as a compromise, the applicant can prepay a certain amount which can go into Maybe as a compromise, the applicant can prepay a certain amount, which can go into a fund that when this street gets redone, his portion.
Counselor, in the, in that, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
When we do our roadway, when we do our improvements?
No. We don't put new curbs in.
Right, I think so.
We, we usually, if, if the, if the drop curb doesn't have a, and it's a function of the lower road surface, and we need a footing and stuff, in that case, we do it in those cases if it's something, but normally we don't put in new curbs.
Any other engineering?
I mean, we've had, we've had neighborhoods in Burdine's Corners, it was the same, same issue, and we've, we've had sidewalks installed, even though neighboring properties didn't have the sidewalks at the time. Um, I'll be, I, I'm not so, I'm not as much concerned with the curbing as I am the sidewalks, because I, I think eventually it's going to benefit pedestrians. Maybe not today, maybe not, maybe ten years down the road, but the point, it's got, my point is, it's got to start somewhere, so. There's no point making improvements to a property and then continuing the same problem of no sidewalk.
Tom, is this the road that eventually gets extended?
No, the road that eventually gets extended is, into the transit villages, Excelsior. It's, it's, right, the, yeah, the one to the left when you're, when you're looking at the, at the map. Excelsior will be extended to allow the neighbors to get out to the traffic light at Commerce Boulevard.
Anything else from the board? Lou, are you, you're, not reasonably, but you're comfortable with the reduction of the amount of houses, we're able to address the drainage concerns?
Yes.
It's definitely doable. Um, if no one else from the board has any questions, I'd love to hear from the public. So a motion to open it to the public for this specific application?
A move.
Second.
Are there second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to be here, heard?
You're supposed to rock, paper, scissors beforehand to see.
Well, no. Good evening, William Kurzweig. I was here last time, I was sworn in, I'm still under that. Can I break my phone out? I see it says no phones right here, but I wanted to address one thing that they said about the water. A couple of weeks ago, I guess it was, we had a pretty substantial rainfall, and I went out and took pictures of the small pond that had existed at the fence line. Can I bring that up? Okay. Um, yeah, yeah. So, um, can I?
He's going to show us a picture. If I may.
Sir.
I, I don't know how this could possibly go into.
That's fine. It can't be, it's not going to be on the record as part of. That's fine.
But.
If you could describe it, maybe that would be a better way to do it, since we really can't, yeah, we can't introduce.
Okay, so if you look at, if you look at, if you look at this color drawing here, lot five, where the rear one hundred meets up to lot nine, and I would assume that's, oh, eight oh two, eight dot oh two, where you see that kind of thing that goes over the line there, that's, that's where the puddle begins. You see where the discoloration happens? That's where that puddle begins, and it comes all the way over to the corner, and then comes into my backyard and into lot four's backyard. So I understand they're saying twenty-five percent reduction. Um, so are they going, so my, my, my question would be, are they going to grade the land so that the rear of the home does not elevate? They're going to downgrade the land, they're going to take that so that even at seventy-five percent, which remains, does that still accumulate back there? Because it, it, it becomes a small pond right there. All of four or five weeks ago, there was a pond right there. It's not, um.
So let me ask a question, store engineer, maybe that can help.
Sure.
The twenty-five percent reduction, Lou, would be related to the grading, correct?
Yes.
But additionally to that, the roof area, which is now basically soil that the water goes into?
Mm-hmm.
The roof area now, whatever percentage or size that is, how many square foot is that? All that square footage now is going to go into conductors that are going to go directly out to the front. So I don't know if that calculation goes into the twenty-five percent, or is additionally makes it better than twenty-five percent plus that surface area, it now no longer receives the rainfall for the most part, and it goes out to the, to the street.
If I understood Mr. Fletcher correctly, it's twenty-five percent of the property is now going to be graded towards the street, correct?
Twenty-five percent of the property, which includes the house and driveway.
Right. But it's not twenty-five percent of a storm drainage volume, it's twenty-five percent of the area of the property being graded towards the street, correct?
Correct.
So it's not a volume of stormwater, twenty-five percent reduction.
So the fact that they're taking the roof area and, and taking those leaders out, that also reduces additional rainfall, so it's.
The lands there today will go towards the street.
Yeah, so technically, there'll be less water that actually hits the ground. It's going to go directly in leaders, and they're going to be piped in, so they won't be able to hit the property.
No, and I, I understand that part. My, my question is, is the grading. So when you, when you grade, I'm not a engineer, I, you know, but if you are going to put a structure in, you have to disturb the land. So is the, the twenty-five percent is going to go forward? Is there going to be an elevation level to, you're, you're now, instead of this high, maybe twenty-five percent goes this high, but now you've elevated, so now you've created more of a moat area in the back. You've now created something that, though you have twenty-five percent going towards the front, that seventy-five percent now increases in encroachment upon my property because of the new elevation of the existing land being disturbed and moved back. Is that?
I think I understand. I mean, it's a good question. I mean, I think, so that pond, the ponding, has probably been there forever.
Right.
So I know if it was me, I would want to know. I mean, it's an existing, it's there, whether we do anything or not. Can we assure the resident that it'll either be better off, or at least no worse than, or no worse than it is today? Because you're right. I think what you're trying to say is if they grade it back.
If they grade it back, so if the rear is this high, and they grade it twenty-five percent going this way, how are they getting that twenty-five percent to go in? Basically, imagine sea level, are they going to go below sea level, and where, you know, are they going to raise that and create a now a higher mound, which creates a pond?
But I would believe any application, we can't, we can't, we're not going to, our CME is not going to approve an application that's going to move more water to an adjacent property owner.
No.
And we're not, just to clarify, we're not legally, we're not, it, we're not legally allowed to have someone completely eliminate the, the existing, an existing drainage problem in area. You know, like this drainage problem.
I don't think we're asking it to live or eliminate it, it doesn't come into my garage now.
We want to make it clear, make it clear that it's not going to get worse. And the indication was that the front twenty-five percent, I believe twenty-five percent of the property going back from Truman Place will be sloped towards Truman Place. In addition, the house goes back in there, and everything hitting the roof, and the, the roof is also going to go out through the leaders, so it should be more than a twenty-five percent.
I'm not worried about the roof.
It should be more. My point is, it's taking an area in the middle of the lot, and everything that hits that is now going forward. Today, that water is going towards your property.
Okay.
So it'll be, it should be more than a twenty-five percent reduction, Lou. If you look at where the house is.
Yep.
If, if the, the house goes back, the house is stuck in the middle of the lot. So if the twen, first, if the twenty-five percent of the land in the front drains forward, and then everything hitting the building also goes forward, there'd be more than a twenty-five percent reduction.
Yeah, I, I would think so.
Their, their engineer would have to speak to whether this is actually what's happening, but at, at the property line, what you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
It shows a ninety-seven point five elevation. Immediately moving towards the street, it drops to ninety-five. So that's a difference where it's moving towards the street, not towards your property. And your property line elevation looks like it stays the same, but they didn't do what you were saying. It doesn't appear, from the latest documents I have, I don't know if they're going to submit something different, but it doesn't appear that they did this, appears that they're doing this.
So basically, the back is not going to be elevated at all?
It's, they didn't raise, your thought was that they raised this as part of the, the reconfiguration of the site. It looks like, it says, there's a, a new line that's cuts across. The existing line stays at ninety-eight, which didn't change, but it looks like it's either ninety-five or ninety, ninety-seven point eight, it's lower, it's a little bit lower maybe at the, at the building. Ninety-eight point five at the corners, but there, it looks like the new slope lines go around and towards the street. That's the way it looks. If this is the latest drawing, he would have to testify if that's the case.
All right, could, my, that, that's all I want to know, is, I want to know if what you're building is going to take the land and basically mushroom it up a little bit, so is that the water, where it drains right now, where, where it sits right now, is that going to then be forced more towards the rear based off of what you're building?
No.
Okay. Second, um.
But it's subject to their review.
Okay. Well, yeah, that's up to you guys. Um, the storm drain, so you're not adding twenty-five percent more into that storm drain? You're not adding more water into that storm drain? Can that storm drain take that?
That's one of the calculations that the CME will be looking for.
Okay. Um, where is the property going to be located versus the property line?
You mean the structure?
Where's it got to be set off of the property line? Twenty-five feet? Thirty feet? What's the, what's it got to be set off?
The house.
The house itself?
Thirty feet, I believe, is the.
The rear setback is thirty-one.
Twenty-seven feet from his line, right?
But where's the, according to the, the code? Because when I want to put pool in, I got to be X amount of feet off the back of the house and off the fence line. Where does the house have to sit off my fence line?
On John's memo, do you have the setback requirements, or do you have the zoning ordinance there? And you have for zone?
I think the rear setback's in compliance, isn't it?
It's got to be, got to conform, it's not one of the variances.
No, yeah. Yes, it, it has to comply with the setback requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Right, so twenty foot is.
So they're not requiring any variance off of my fence line?
That, that particular lot for the new house doesn't require variance, no.
The only variance they're requesting are for the existing lot with the house, and
most of those are, are existing conditions.
Rear requirement is twenty, it's twenty-seven, so it's seven foot better.
We're going to have to talk. Um, all right.
Wait.
He wants a pool.
Yeah. Um, as to, um, we talked about, you, you had mentioned the sidewalk. I'm sorry about this, I'm going to ask a question. When you bring Excelsior through there, and you extend it out, is part of the, you were talking about improvements? Do they, are they going to add a sidewalk on that side? Is that, would that affect this one having to add the sidewalk on that side? Um, I don't think so. You're, well, what I, what I'm asking for is a sidewalk around both properties. Okay. Yeah, that's what I'm asking. I, I signed, the pen is kind of, I don't want to lick it, so. You got two I's, there's only one I in my name. Or two I's. Is there anyone else who would like to? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard? No, you're good.
All the range two thousand, all the way forward.
Okay. Is there anyone else from the vast viewing public? Anyone from TV, driving out? Okay. If no other residents, a motion to. We're, we're still waiting on to find out about the, the elevations, though, yes?
No.
No.
Well, no, it's, it's often a, a, a condition of approval. There, it's not uncommon for, for there to be discussion about drainage. There's always a comment in the CME memo that says they have to prove that there's adequate capacity in the storm sewer in the road to take the runoff, those type of things. And they've represented on the record that they're going to be grading the first, the front twenty-five percent. They did not provide that calculation, but that would be a condition of approval. And if they didn't submit those calculations, they would never get their pla, they would never get their plans, assuming the board granted, they would never get their plans approved.
Okay.
They would never get a signature to actually build.
And as to the, as to the drainage, the concern I have there is because my daughter, where that, where Joe's property line is right there, that curb, that's the bus stop. So that's where all the children get on to the buses, is right there between five and the, and, uh, five oh two. That's, that's the bus stop right there. So that's the, the main concern I have is if that storm drain can take that, are we going to flood that area out and the kids are going to?
So once the engineer gets the calculations and the stormwater plan and reviews it, then, you know, then we'll have the recommendation from them, and they won't be able to be approved if it's not acceptable.
Thank you very much.
If there's no one from the, uh, motion closed, public?
A move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is there, um, any more further discussion from the board? I mean, I know Ms. Malanson brought up the sidewalks, I don't know how the other board members feel.
I agree about the sidewalks.
No, uh, just, just one thing. Pat brought up the sidewalk and curb. I mean, to, to curb one lot with no other curbing in the area, I think makes no sense. I can see Pat's concept about the sidewalk.
The curb, the curb isn't as much of an issue.
Start, you know, let's start. Even if somebody moves in, they have a dog, they can walk on the sidewalk out in front there, they have a two hundred foot sidewalk. But I, I would be, I'd be opposed to curb, another curb in the area, but I, I can see a benefit to.
I think, I think we agreed sidewalk, yeah, just sidewalk.
I mean, if there was a sidewalk around the, I mean, could that be the bus stop? I, I don't, I'm, I'm indifferent on that.
Mr. Chairman? The applicant would withdraw the waiver request for the sidewalks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we could work, work together to make the best fit. I mean, knowing that it's a bus stop there, if there's a way we can put a sidewalk area and make it safer for children, I think it's a win-win. Uh, but we could certainly leave it up to, to you guys.
We'll figure out.
All right. If there's no further question from the board?
Can I just ask one question? Are we talking about sidewalks on both streets or just Truman?
What was the question?
Sidewalks on both streets or just Truman?
Both, on both streets, right around the corner, yeah. Both streets.
So Pat, Pat is suggesting that it would go down the two hundred feet of Truman and the fifty foot on Edwin?
Correct.
Wrap around the corner.
Correct.
The entire outside perimeter.
The applicant, yeah, the applicant owns all those, all that property, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
But not curbing?
No, not, not curb, no.
That would, that would be kind of silly.
Yeah.
The applicant is okay with that? I'm sure he doesn't want to come back. So a motion would be in order?
I make a motion, we approve the application, subject to the conditions we laid out here this evening.
And do we, would you like to read those conditions?
Specifically, Ray, we'll make sure that, that, that includes a sidewalk along the entire periphery and submission of drainage calculations. Do you want to go over wording, or what you dotted down for conditions?
Yeah. I just want to make sure Dominic's done there, so he can object or hear if we don't. That's all right. I just want to go through and make sure that we have these conditions now.
If I may have just one more second with the applicant, and I apologize.
He's talking about your pool. It wouldn't be good for you.
Hey, you own, you own both properties, why would you? You're the one who sent it to stop the sidewalk. Exactly, so don't stop it. Bring it out.
He would like five minutes to discuss further, the removal of the waiver for the sidewalks. We're talking about more entirety versus a certain location. So if I could just have five minutes, maybe before.
Certainly.
It's the applicant's request.
Really?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, thank you very much.
No worries.
I appreciate it, thank you, I'm sorry. We'll take a five minute.
Resess.
Resess.
Turn off, turn off.
Turn off, turn off.
Turn off, turn off.
I'm sorry, thank you very much.
All right.
No worries.
I appreciate it, thank you, I'm sorry.
We'll take a five minute.
Resess.
Resess.
Turn off, turn off.
minutes to discuss further, the removal of the waiver for the sidewalks, we're talking about more entirety versus a certain location, so if I could just have five minutes maybe before...
Certainly.
It's the applicant's request. Thank you.
I'm sorry, thank you very much.
No worries.
I appreciate it, thank you, I'm sorry.
We'll take a five minute.
Resess.
Resess.
Turn off, turn off.
minutes to discuss further, the removal of the waiver for the sidewalks, we're talking about more entirety versus a certain location, so if I could just have five minutes maybe before...
Certainly. It's the applicant's request. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you very much.
No worries.
We'll take a five minute.
Resess.
Resess.
Turn off, turn off.
Apparently the applicant misunderstood my conversation with him, he would like five minutes to discuss further, the removal of the waiver for the sidewalks, we're talking about more entirety versus a certain location, so if I could just have five minutes maybe before...
Certainly. It's the applicant's request. Thank you.
I'm sorry, thank you very much.
No worries.
I appreciate it, thank you, I'm sorry.
We'll take a five minute.
Resess.
Resess.
Turn off, turn off.
Apparently the applicant misunderstood my conversation with him, he would like five minutes to discuss further, the removal of the waiver for the sidewalks, we're talking about more entirety versus a certain location, so if I could just have five minutes maybe before...
Certainly. It's the applicant's request. Thank you.
I'm sorry, thank you very much.
No worries.
I appreciate it, thank you, I'm sorry.
We'll take a five minute.
Resess.
Resess.
Turn off, turn off.
Apparently the applicant misunderstood my conversation with him, he would like five minutes to discuss further, the removal of the waiver for the sidewalks, we're talking about more entirety versus a certain location, so if I could just have five minutes maybe before...
Certainly. It's the applicant's request. Thank you.
Next up, next up the bat is a new application, Coil Realty LLC, Route 1 South, Block 4-45, Lots 5.01 and 14-22, Lot 75, Lots 1 through 4 and 6 through 9, an event center.
Yes, Mr. Zangara. He's the chairman, I just want to stand here for my first preliminary statements, because I always feel I'm, I've got a paranoia that I'm leaving the right side of the planning board in limbo. For the record, James Stahl, S-T-A-H-L, the firm is Boris Golden Foley, New Yolo Hyman and Stahl, North Brunswick, New Jersey, I have provided Janice with the completed affidavit of publication, affidavit of service, all should be in order, and we'll wait for counsel, if you want me to start, I can start.
I think we're confirming that, the notices?
My paralegal had, had the flu, which threw us off, that's why it got here late, one of many people.
I made, Mr. Chairman?
So we believe the notices?
Yeah, I had a chance to look and speak with the secretary, and yet the notices are adequate, and they've, they've made through the appropriate notices, and we have jurisdiction here, or the board.
I'm going to be brief with the, my preliminary presentation, because it's not complicated, but I'm going to be a little slower than I usually am in presentation, because there may be some questions. While this is a new application, it's really about the second or third revised application. The original application, you may recall, was for about 12,000 square feet, 400 patrons at a catering facility, business meeting facility, we met with the staff over the time period, and we reworked both the parking and other areas, we're now down to something under 10,000 square feet with a maximum occupancy as to patrons of 250 and approximately 30, maximum 30 employees, strike that, 30 catering individuals who we will describe later as coming off site. There are four variances, I will just be brief, and then Mr. Lane will further identify them, we have a parking variance, we feel that we can resolve that with shared parking and the use of the two hotels, we have a retaining wall, which is a variance in terms of distance from the building, we have a lot width, which is an existing bulk variance, and a new one I just learned this evening, a height variance because of the elevator tower bathroom, which is between 10 and 12 feet. Now, I have a, my notice indicates any and all other variances or waivers that the board may require, so I would hope that that will be sufficient. Now, what this is, again, I'm trying to be brief, this is in between the State Bridge and the Holiday and Express on Route 1, there is some identity of ownership together, it's not all owned by the same, but there is some identity, and we'll have no problem getting easements, there's consent all around, because there are certain relationships, if you will. The concept is to have a facility in the middle between those two hotels, we'll show you a rendering by Kamla Shah, architect, which I think is very nice, but I usually do, I seldom say something's ugly, but it's very pretty, and what it's going to do is going to service, I try and be transparent, so, it's going to service both hotels, it's going to be used, as you'll hear, for business meetings, conferences, it's going to be used for life cycle events, weddings, confirmations, it could be, with all due respect, not hitting the party, it could be a political event, it could be a soccer club, it could be any number of events, there will also be events that will be tuned in with respect to the hotels. I gave Mr. Watson and Mr. LaCaca, I always mess up his name, but he doesn't mind, a copy of the, I know his first name, I gave him a copy of the traffic, or what we call the parking statistics, and we don't expect, actually, at this time, we may not finish our presentation tonight, but Mr. Watson would then meet with Mr. Troutman or with Mr. Ray and go over the parking calculations, it is the most important element, if you will, of the entire application. I have the following witnesses, I have a witness who is the general manager of the hotels, who will testify as to operations, I have, I have Mr. Bill Lane from Menlo Engineering, who will provide the site engineering information, I have Suchita, I'm really having trouble tonight because I've been sitting here, Suchita Shah, who is the architect, we all laugh together, and then I have Mr. John Ray, who will do the traffic, whether Mr. Ray continues will be depend upon whether we finish tonight, and Mr. Troutman may come back, but he's going to interface with Mr. Watson, so rather than, I just wanted to indicate that to you so you have a sense of where we're going, and I'm going to sit over here, do you want me to stay here or over there?
You can sit at the table, call your...
Could I just, just for clarification, one thing, I didn't understand, so what you said about meeting with Mr. Watson later on the parking, I didn't understand what you meant by that.
All right, here's what's, I don't know whether or not we'll get to John Ray tonight on traffic, and if we did, there are going to be issues that Jim Watson is going to have, because he just got some of the traffic counts tonight, so if we got to John, I'm not going to ask, obviously, for a decision tonight, and we would ask to be carried to the next month, and that John or Jay and Jim, the three Js, discuss the traffic, and then the next meeting, we'd be in a position to answer questions, that's what I meant.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just...
I'm trying to talk slower, you know, it's...
Let's take a little run it this way, if you want to talk a little faster.
Oh, come, right over here. Raise your right hand, and you'll be sworn.
Could you state your name and spell it for the record?
My name is Rita Corville, that's R-I-T-A-C-O-U-R-V-E-X-L.
And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give here is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Corville, please keep your voice up to the board, especially those in the picture section, you can hear what you have to say, you are the general manager of the hotel, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the two hotels are State Bridge and Holiday Express, is that correct?
That is correct.
And these are, are they similar in types of operation?
That is correct.
And that's, they're not extended, well, they can be extended stays, but what's the normal stay for any resident that comes?
Can be for anywhere from seven to 30-plus days.
And both of those hotels, in the middle of the land, there's an area that we intend to put an event center, is that correct?
That is correct.
And as a general manager, you're very familiar with the operations of the hotels, and the proposed operation of the event center, is that correct?
That is correct.
And as a real hotel, these are two business hotels, are they not?
Yes, they are.
When I say business, they cater to the traveling business clientele, is that correct?
That is correct.
So that would mean that between Monday and Sunday night to Thursday night, you primarily cater to the businessman, is that correct?
That is correct.
And it's Friday night, Saturday and Sunday, are those typically the lightest times for your rooms?
That is correct.
Now, that certainly does not hold true when we have Rutgers graduation, Princeton graduation, and other... I gave Mr. Watson and Mr. LaCaca, I always mess up his name, but he doesn't mind, a copy of the, I know his first name. I gave him a copy of the traffic or what we call the parking statistics. And we don't expect, actually, at this time, we may not finish our presentation tonight, but Mr. Watson would then meet with Mr. Troutman or with Mr. Ray and go over the parking calculations. It is the most important element, if you will, of the entire application. I have the following witnesses. I have a witness who is the general manager of the hotels, who will testify as to operations. I have, I have Mr. Bill Lane from Menlo Engineering, who will provide the site engineering information. I have Suchita. I'm really having trouble tonight because I've been sitting here. Suchita Shah, who is the architect, we all laugh together. And then I have Mr. John Ray, who will do the traffic. Whether Mr. Ray continues will be depend upon whether we finish tonight and Mr. Troutman may come back, but he's going to interface with Mr. Watson. So rather than, I just wanted to indicate that to you so you have a sense of where we're going. And I'm going to sit over here and, do you want me to stay here or over there?
You can sit at the table, call your.
Could I just, yes, for clarification on one thing, I didn't understand, Mr. Stahl, what you said about meeting with Mr. Watson later on the parking.
Well, what's going to happen is-
I didn't understand what you meant by that.
All right, here's what's, I don't know whether or not we'll get to John Ray tonight on traffic. And if we did, there are going to be issues that Jim Watson is going to have because he just got some of the traffic counts tonight. So if we got to John, I'm not going to ask, obviously, for a decision tonight and we would ask to be carried to the next month and that John or Jay and Jim, the three Jays, discuss the traffic. And then the next meeting, we'd be in a position to answer questions. That, that's what I meant.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just.
I'm trying to talk slower, you know, it's-
Let's take a little run at this, maybe you want to talk a little faster. Oh, come, right over here. Raise your right hand and you'll be sworn.
Could you state your name and spell it for the record?
My name is Rita Corville. That's C-O-U-R-V-L-E.
And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give here is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Corville, please keep your voice up to the board, especially those in the future section, and hear what you have to say. You are the general manager of the hotel, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the two hotels are State Bridge and Holiday Inn Express, is that correct?
That is correct.
And these are, are they similar in types of operation?
That is correct.
And that's, they're not extended, well, they can be extended stay, but what's the normal stay for any resident that comes?
Can be for anywhere from seven to thirty-plus days.
And both of those hotels, in the middle of the land, there's an area that we intend to put a, an event center, is that correct?
That is correct.
And as a general manager, you're very familiar with the operations of the hotels, and the proposed operation of the event center, is that correct?
That is correct.
And as a hotel, these are two business hotels, are they not?
Yes, they are.
When I say business, they cater to the traveling business clientele, is that correct?
That is correct.
So that would mean that between Monday and Sunday night to Thursday night, you primarily cater to the businessman, is that correct?
That is correct.
And is it Friday night, Saturday and Sunday, are those typically the lightest times for your rooms?
That is correct.
Now, that certainly does not hold true when we have Rutgers graduation, Princeton graduation and other events which may call for the use of hotels along the entire corridor, is that correct?
That is correct.
And since the occupancy on Friday night through Sunday is less, the parking demand in the two hotels is equally less, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the use of the, the proposed use of this event center, as I indicated before, you may correct me if I'm wrong, is going to be for, when I say convention, small business meetings, life cycle events as far as weddings and other areas that will be catered, just executive sessions, training sessions. That's the purpose, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you and the applicant do understand that the occupancy will never exceed two hundred and fifty plus the employee staff, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that this is a result of some working on a project and marketing and reducing the overall size, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Now, there is a, I'm sorry, now, there is a rooftop and there were some questions. That rooftop is going to be for either pre-events or cocktail hours depending upon the weather, is that correct?
That is correct.
And it's not adding to two fifty, that is within the two fifty, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And there's a bar area up there and is also other areas for, as I say, the pre-event, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Now, let's go for the basement. The basement is going to be the kitchen, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And that's a full kitchen?
Yes, that is correct.
Not just a warming kitchen. And in addition downstairs, there will be the storage, is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, we move to the first floor. In the first floor, Ms. Shah has designed a two-story lobby and entry area, is that correct?
That is correct.
So just so the board understands, it's going to be a two-story area, so that, in that, in the beginning, is that correct?
That is correct.
And once you get in, in the first floor, that you will recall, and I never heard this before, is called the green room.
That is correct.
And the green room, for those who are not aware of it, is a room for pre-events. It's where the bride would stay. It's where the sweet sixteen young lady would stay. It's where the executive committee of a political party or club might work out some of the events. And that's going to be in the first floor, is that correct?
That is correct.
And in the second floor, there will be another green room, is that correct?
That is correct.
And on the second floor, there will also be a manager's office.
That is correct.
And one of the issues of the staff, there is no permanent staff at that location, is that correct?
That is correct.
To the extent that there will be things happening there, you would staff that with individuals from either one of the two hotels, depending on which one is sponsoring the event, am I correct?
That is correct.
So I mean, you may have a general manager or a custodian who might be there, but other than that, there are no permanent employees.
That is correct.
And you understand that we have discussed the fact that upon catering events, as a condition of any contract let to any catering facility or company, they will have to agree to bus or transport their employees otherwise from an off-site location so that the employees are not parking on-site, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And just so we understand, when there are different events, we may have a list of preferred caterers depending upon the food and the dietary restrictions of any, of any of our clients, will then cater, is that correct?
That is correct.
We are not going to staff, again, the applicant is not going to staff the kitchen, am I correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So the kitchen is going to be for the use of any catering company that come along.
That is correct.
And during the week, the hours of operation, we would say, we'd use the word unlimited, subject to the following. It's not a twenty-four hour operation, but depending upon, if there's going to be thirty people that are coming for an executive meeting, they may stay over Thursday night, or they may get up and have breakfast at the location and break after meetings, and they may stay there till after dinner, is that correct?
That is correct.
So it's not a twenty-four hour. We don't, in the same extent, the hotels are not limited in hours, neither will the event, the location, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And on weekends, at the same extent, when we have social events or other events, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, we don't see any limit, again, in that being twenty-four hours, if liquor is served, that will stop at the time the, the restrictions in North Brunswick are in place with regard to service of liquor, but we have no reason to have any limitations on, on time, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Excellent.
The, have I missed, now, you've been in the business, I'm sorry that I didn't qualify you better. How long have you been in the food and beverage or in the hotel management business?
Well, I've been in the business for twenty-five years, but I've been with the State Bridge for eight years and the Holiday Inn Express for two.
And you, you are the person who, you have a sales organization that promote the two hotels, is that correct?
Yes, I certainly do.
And that same sales organization and manager will also do the sales effort to utilize the executive business event center, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that marketing may be, you know, if you've come here and bring your event here, be it a social event or a business event, will give you special consolidated rates on hotel and the use of the event facility, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Can you think and, and of anything that I may have missed that I should have asked you?
I think you covered it all.
Well, we'll find out in about two minutes. Mr. Chairman and Board, that's all I have to discuss with this.
Great. Couple quick questions. So catering company supplies the liquor license, I assume, or will you have your own?
May I answer that, Mr. Chairman? At the present time, neither of the hotels qualifies alone, I don't believe, for the hundred-room liquor license exemption. So the plan is that the caterer, if there's going to be alcohol, would have to have an onsite catering license to use in this facility. There may come a time in the future that the applicant may apply for a liquor license for the facility, but I can tell you that there's no present plan for that, but I don't want to say anything, and if false, it could happen.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm disappointed you didn't ask the last question, so it could have been answered. Yes, that's correct. When, your last question to Mrs. Corville, that was about as direct, you know, like bumpa de bumpa de bum. A lot of times, we get a lot of meandering around. It was just, you know, bullet, bullet, bullet. I understood.
I think they were here during the last application.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I understood, I understood everything except the, you asked Corville about, something about catering. You know, it's the first time we've heard this, so, and you're going to be doing this, so could she just state on the record what is going to be happening, what Mrs. Corville is saying is going to be happening with respect to any caterer and cars coming in and out?
Well, that, I would, if you don't mind, Mr. Big, I'd like Mr. Lane or Mr. Ray, because there, there is no plan right now for, for valet. And as I indicated, we're going to.
I'm sorry, I'm, so I only meant with respect to the catering. I think you asked a question that said,
Busing limit.
Any caterer, there'd be, we've agreed, there'll be an agreement in place where nobody will be able to bring their own employees. It was quick. I just wanted to get, that's, I'm not talking about people coming to and from, just respect to the caterer.
For a two-hundred-and-fifty-person event, you're probably going to need, I don't know, fifty, seventy, a bunch of people.
But we think there are, we're not sure.
So the, but the outside caterer will bring them, they'll park off-site, right? Is that what you're driving at?
Or, or, I mean, but, they have to bus, I mean, I, you know, because, yeah, please.
But no, we have discussed this with Mr. Troutman and Mr. Lane. And whoever we select and gets a contract to cater, and I'm not talking about a small business meeting where we go to Joe's and bring home, back platters, but wherever we're going to have a caterer cooking or warming and serving with waitstaff, bus staff, et cetera. The condition of the contract with that caterer, with them in the business with us, will be that they must agree that the only thing that can park there will be the delivery facilities, maybe the manager's car, but all other employees will have to be bused there or brought by other transportation, am I correct?
Yes, you are correct.
And in this spirit, if you don't see that as a problem, the caterer's going to be, what's our business, does it not?
That's correct.
Now, I've heard you say you've discussed that, so you're, you're stating on the record that anytime you have a catered event there, that the caterer will not, catering employees will not be able to drive there on their own.
That could be a condition.
And that's what you're saying, you, you, right? That's who you're representing?
Yes, that's what I'm representing.
And then how, I'm just curious, you know, as an attorney, Mr. Stahl, how, how would we enforce that? Because when it township, it's always got to be concerned about how you enforce various conditions.
How do we enforce that?
Well, it's always a question of how do you enforce, it's just, the only way we can enforce it, we have a condition. If we start having twenty or thirty more cars from employees, it's going to change the, the dynamic of the parking equation and the parking ingress and egress. I mean, I can provide, and I can agree to provide to the board, I mean, the applicant, for each catering event, we'll probably require, I'm thinking, a license or permit for a catering facility that will give you a report.
Well, it's not up to us to, why would we want, what do we care?
Well, if we're going to make, if we're going to use that to make a decision on the parking variance based on a representation, you know, they're going to be saying there'll be no, no employees' cars. That, that's why they're, that, that's why you're, that's why you're representing that, because you're short parking, correct? So that's why you're going to do that, yeah. So at a minimum, at a minimum, you could provide standard language that, that, you know, so that, that would be incorporated in any catering contract you did.
I mean, I think we could make it work with thirty.
Right. I mean, now, I got you. If there's no place to park, no one, you're not coming back.
It's almost a self-enforcing procedure because we, we want, we don't want problems. I think, but I don't want to play that game, that even with twenty more parking spaces from employees, I think we can show you the site will work. But that twenty is a cushion for us and I'd like to have it. So when I say, because I want counsel to make sure that our language is consistent, I'm saying a catering, and we can put a number on it. If I have forty people coming and I've got three waitstaff, they may park there. I'm more concerned when I hit the triple digits, one hundred or more, and I have off-site catering. The words will be off-site catering. Off-site catering employees cannot park on-site. And I think that's a condition, you know, the police, if they start seeing things, you know, they may issue tickets or whatever.
They can't do that. I mean, like, the police can't issue tickets because-
Illegal parking. Parking on the street, if parking illegal, well, they could.
Is there parking on Elizabeth Street, Tom? There's no parking restrictions on Elizabeth Street, is there?
No, there's not.
No, no, but that, there is some parking, but let's, Bill Lane, straight there. There was an issue of how we're going to stack it. Okay. Mr. Andrews?
Okay, so, early on, I think you said, and I don't know if this is true or not, both hotels has a two-hundred-and-fifty-person occupancy?
No, oh, no, no, I'm sorry. The maximum occupancy for the event center is two fifty. Ms. Corville, what's, how many rooms are in the Holiday Inn?
Ninety-three.
And how many are in the State Bridge?
Eighty-four.
That's why there's no liquor license. You need a hundred rooms to get the exemption.
Okay, so, just a question about the weekends. It's my understanding that the hotels in the corridor are benefiting greatly from the fact that Rutgers is in the Big Ten, that on the weekends, when Ohio State comes or some of these other, this is in the fall, when they come, they're, they've been staying at a lot of the hotels in the corridor. Is that true? Have you experienced that on the weekends?
Well, that, assuming that Shiano brings us back to a prestige location, I don't think last year or the year before, because a lot of my friends and clients who were in the hospitality business didn't do so well. But yes, I think, assuming football games.
That was a question for, for your witness, though.
Yeah. I didn't notice that you managed.
What's the average occupancy on the weekends for, over the last? Right now, what's your average?
Have you seen a bump? Because I've been told that the new hotel, that the Marriott or whatever, it's at the, you know, the new Transit Village site, that a lot of the schools that are from out of town, the Big Ten, they've actually had people come and stay there. So that's why I'm asking the question.
We do have some reservations staying with us, but we're running about fifty percent occupancy.
So that, so if it gets better with the new coach, it's, it's actually an economic positive for us that we would see more rooms on the weekends.
And I'd like to note, Mr. Andrews, and I'm not testifying, but I'm understanding, the Marriott does not have meeting rooms or a conference center, it's-
No, no, the, the point of that wasn't that. The point of that was, you were, you were kind of indicating on the weekends that we were going to see a dive, and I was going to say in the fall, you may see an increase of, of people. So now, with ninety-three and eighty-four rooms in both, if you did have those, we're going to fill it up and at night, where a lot of these events may occur, you may have some events during the day, and during the week, you'll get your conferences and things like that. But what controls the fact that you have two hotels and people are booking rooms? And I know myself, whenever I come back to my room at night when I'm staying someplace, it's hard to find a parking space because at that point in time, everybody kind of comes back, and so you're, you're driving around looking for a parking space. But at the same time, a local group has an event, not if it's a wedding and the people are staying in the hotels because they're occupying parking space. So now you have kind of a dilemma in my mind. You have a dilemma of the, who's controlling the fact that you've got major occupancy and at the same time, you might have the North Brunswick X, Y, Z staying at the event center, so there's another two hundred and potential, two-hundred-and-fifty potential people.
And now, and yet, it's a good question. I'll give you a better answer. First of all, by the way, for the football season.
The answer's got to, you know, you know, the answer's got to come from your witness.
Yeah, like if, you know, in a murder trial, the attorney's not allowed to, unless you want to go to jail for-
The answer's going to come, but I also want to make sure.
We can swear him in.
There's five, assuming Rutgers does very well, I think there'll be a maximum of five home games. So that's five Saturdays or, or Saturday nights. But, Ms. Corville, you can answer this question. How do you control the two hotels and events?
Basically, an overbooking situation where now you have hotels packed and you know you have an event coming in which is unrelated to the hotel. They live around here. You know, the East Brunswick Soccer Club decides to have their banquet over here.
Okay, well, especially with the State Bridge Suites, we're on extended stay property, so a lot of our corporate clientele comes overseas, so they don't have a car. They either Uber it or take a taxi.
And how else do you control the occupancy? Without leading you too much, you control your rooms, do you not?
Absolutely.
So if you want to lock out rooms because you're going to have a different people staying, you lock it out and reserve them for other people, am I correct?
Yes, that is correct.
I don't understand what that question meant.
A lockout?
Yeah, it's, I, I don't understand.
No, I'll try it again.
Yeah.
You control the two hotels, is that correct?
Yes, I do.
Let's say you're going to have, you know you're going to have, you have a lot of bookings for Rutgers for a football game and you're jam, you're full up in two hotels, is that right?
Yes.
Are you going to, knowing that's happening and knowing the schedule of the football, are you going to book a two-hundred-and-fifty-person event?
Damn right, that's a lot of money.
And plus, she probably booked that event six months in advance or four months in advance.
If the hotel, if the hotel is booked, it's seventy-five percent occupancy, right? So what's that, and you figure one car per, per room, and you have a two-hundred-person wedding. Can you, how, what is the plan to facilitate all of those cars?
Well, we'll utilize all the, you know, all the spaces at the Holiday Inn and also have the State Bridge.
Yeah, but the, the question is,
So how many space?
Relationship to coordination of events versus hotel stay. Because, listen, I'm, I'm more than happy to see you guys have a great deal of success and book every room in the hotel every day of the year so that you're, you're a viable, great flourishing organization, a business in town. But we can't have a line of cars from the intersection trying to turn into a singular driveway and, and then they can't find places to park, especially with some of the bottleneck conditions that occur right at-
But not everybody will stay. Not everyone will stay. Somebody will attend event or stay, but they will not stay over at the, whatever the hotel.
You have a wedding for two-hundred-and-fifty people. You offer them X rooms in both hotels. You'll, you've now locked those rooms for the event, is that correct?
Yes.
So if Rutgers now has a big weekend, there may not be rooms for the Rutgers because you booked a two-hundred-and-fifty- you booked a two-hundred-and-fifty event, is that correct?
That is correct.
Do you do control by future reservations, what's going to go there?
Absolutely.
Could you clarify, just, and, this is not a question for your traffic engineer, how many spots there are, parking spaces for each hotel, right now? How many spaces you have for each hotel?
I'd rather, if it's all right, but you think I'd like...
We're not, we're not making an evaluation now. Ms. Corville, do you know how many parking spaces there are for, for each hotel?
Don't guess, if you know, you know.
Yeah?
No, 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 they want you to answer the question. Do you know how many spaces are in each of the hotels?
You don't have to know. We're not forcing you for an answer. If you don't know, say you don't know.
I'm not quite sure.
Okay, all right.
Good. That's a very honest answer. Somebody else, I'm sure you have some other expert that'll answer that.
Thank you.
Right, so, maybe, as far as how things are going to work, I think we did a very good job. I've been in there. Hopefully, the catering center, and been in your hotels, are as clean as the hotels. But I think we want to, we should, we hear from our next witness, maybe we can talk about the parking situation.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're going to discuss the parking variance in detail, and that's why we have, you know, Mr. Ray here, and that's where we'll be discussing with Mr. Watson. I mean, we can't get, you know...
Parking, I mean, Mr. Watson would be for traffic circulation, right?
Well, that's part of it, because we have some issues with regard to the driveway, whether it's a one-way driveway, a two, a two-way driveway, whether there's a return at the end, whether there's a K-turn at the end. You may have looked at some of that already, but we're...
I mean, that seems to be the best thing, why don't we get into it?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a parking comment in here, and that is one of the topics we plan on discussing with their...
Do you know how many spots, how many spot, parking spots there are in the hotels?
I don't know how many there are at the Holiday Inn, but I know there's eighty-four at the State Bridge.
Might say sixty-seven.
I believe it says, one per, one per, one parking space per room. That's for the existing, the hotel.
Sixty-four, sixty-seven.
And then, so we, we have a comment in here that goes through the...
Just basically...
...parts that identify the efficiency that they have.
Okay, well, we can address that when we get there.
Yeah.
A simple answer would be, we would require the person to hire a catering, a valet center. We can move right along.
Yeah, we're, we'll discuss what we're doing. Are we done with this young lady?
Yes, thank you very much.
Mr. Lane?
No.
Do stand, raise your right hand.
Uh, sir, can you state your name and spell it?
Yes, William Lane, is that what I mean?
Uh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Lane, you're a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
How many years have you still licensed?
Twenty-three.
You've licensed in any other jurisdictions?
Just in New Jersey.
And are you a member of Mello Engineering?
Yes, I've been with them for thirty-five years.
Only thirty-five years?
Only, yep.
Have you appeared before this board, or the other boards in this town, South Brunswick, and throughout the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And your testimony has been with site engineering, is that correct?
Yes.
Would the chairman of the board ask that you accept Mr. Lane as a...
That's a good question. Go back. Graduate of NJIT.
We'll accept you as an expert.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lane, see, then I start to hurry sometimes. Anyway, Mr. Lane, you were engaged to do a site plan approval with variances in connection with proposed event center, is that correct?
Yes.
I would like you, please, as, as you are comfortable, to explain the current conditions on the property and the proposed development of the property.
Sure. I'd like to present my first exhibit.
Mr. Garrett, do you want that in another place, the camera or the board?
I think our camera, we got new cameras, right? I think...
They move. The new cameras are robotic, but you might want to move it up over here in this location just behind, so it'll be easier for them to see. Come forward a little bit.
Forward. Good?
Very good.
Now, Mr. Lane, as you identify certain exhibits, this exhibit, does it have, it's called Existing Conditions Exhibit Two-One-Twenty?
Yes.
Can I therefore assume that it's not in the package that was provided to the board?
Correct.
Could I, you find a place on that with the permission of the board attorney, and put the letter A dash one and today's date, please? Do you want to pen? Okay. And again, even though I mentioned it, could you just describe to the board what it is, what it is described as, and what it is?
Yes, this is entitled Existing Conditions Exhibit Dated Two-Eleven Twenty-Twenty.
Voice up.
Yeah, okay, the, what this depicts is the event center lot, which is at the corner of Elizabeth Street and Route One. And then to the south is the State Bridge property, which shows the building and the parking layout that exists out there today. Just to the north, on the other side of Elizabeth Street, is the Holiday Inn Express, which was recently completed by the applicant a few years ago. The properties, as shown, is what our ultimate configuration of the lots are going to be between those two properties, after the event center is consolidated into one property, and there approximately twelve thousand square feet from the State Bridge Center will be dedicated or given to the event center property. For my next exhibit, this is entitled Site Plan Exhibit, and again, it's dated Two-Eleven Twenty.
Can I therefore assume that also was not in the package?
Correct.
Well, it was in the package, but just not colored?
Well, it's, it's partly the geometry plan, along with the landscape and plan color, and then it's got an aerial background of, from Google Images.
Go to the left two, A two, please.
Yes.
And that is the proposed development?
Correct. Okay, what this shows is the improvements on the project, and as you could see, all the improvements are up along the front of the property, along Route One. And that's because the back three acres of the property is wetlands, and that's all consumed within a conservation easement that's been deed restricted and already sent off to the DEP. So with that, the event center, which has a footprint of nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight square feet, to the rear of that is a concrete patio that overlooks out into the woods. In the front, we have a drop-off area along with the canopy. In front of the event center, we have our parking lot that extends the existing front parking lot along State Bridge, along the front of the event center, over towards Elizabeth Street. That'll total fifty-seven spaces. The existing sixty-seven spaces that are on the side and the rear of State Bridge, those will remain, so we'll have a total of one-hundred-and-twenty-four parking spaces. And of the fifty-seven in the front, we're proposing four electric stations, as per North Brunswick requirement. Along the north side of the event center, we have a, a concrete area that's set aside for loading. Box trucks will come in down Route One, into the driveway entrance in front of the State Bridge, access along the driveway that cuts in front of the event center, and then back into that loading area. Also, at the end of that driveway, we have our dumpster enclosure, which, similarly to the single-unit trucks for deliveries, that's where the garbage truck will have to come down, come to the end of the driveway, have to roll the dumpsters out, pick them up, then similarly, turn around in the loading area and back out. Our utilities, oh, let me, and also at the end of the driveway, we have our, we have a one-way driveway out onto Elizabeth Street. Our thought for that driveway access was, anybody that's staying at the Holiday Inn, that's attending the event center, they could leave the event center, come out into Elizabeth Street, and turn easily into the sign entrance on the Holiday Inn. Also, that could be used for any kind of emergency access that needs to be come off Elizabeth Street. With that, for our utilities, we're bringing our gas and sewer off Elizabeth Street, water is coming off of Route One. There's a underground detention basin below the proposed parking lot to help attenuate the runoff with the, from the proposed improvements. The applicant's proposing forty-three trees, one-hundred-and-forty-six shrubs, we've got nineteen shade trees, majority of them along the Route One frontage, to help the aesthetics of the site. Also, we're proposing four new LED light fixtures, twenty-four-and-a-half-foot-high, settings off a twenty-two-foot pole that goes a little across the front of the property. The existing sign out along the main entrance, that's going to be redesigned, reconstructed to a one-hundred-square-foot sign, so it'll identify for both the State Bridge and the event center. That'll be approximately twenty feet high, similar to what we had proposed at the Holiday Inn. With that, I guess, probably start talking a little about the, the parking variance. We're proposing one-hundred-and-twenty-four, again, with the charging stations, I believe the town ordinance allows you to double up on those, so we could be looking at one-hundred-and-twenty-eight spaces. What's required is one-hundred-and-forty-seven. So, looking at these as being mutually similar, or almost like a complementary uses, we're assuming that there are going to be some people that are attending the event, will be staying at the hotel. So, if we look at roughly anywhere from twelve to, say, sixteen percent, depending on if we could double up on the charging stations, we fall within the allowable amount for, on property, and being within that required amount. I think if, it's about anywhere from nineteen, it's nineteen if we can take into account the charging stations, if not, I think we're at, like, twenty-three. Also, with, to help further the, the parking variance, I attended, or came out to the site over the weekend on Friday and Saturday night, when, assuming that the event center's, that would be the most intense time for any events out here. The State Bridge on a Friday night had twenty-five cars in the parking lot, and on Saturday night, there was twenty. I similarly went over to the Holiday Inn Express. On Friday night, there was twenty spaces, and on Saturday night, there was forty-eight. So a little bit more on the Holiday Inn on Saturday night. The State Bridge currently has eighty-five spaces, and the Holiday Inn has eighty-one, so there's a total of one-hundred-and-sixty-six spaces across there. So even on the Saturday night, when it was maxed out with the, or the max parking on the Holiday Inn site, and included in the State Bridge, there was sixty-eight total cars. So there was almost another ninety-eight, ninety-nine spaces still available between the both parking lots. So I think that helps lead to, that, it doesn't seem to be on the weekends, at least from the weekends I observe, I know the traffic engineers done other studies at other times, that there will be available parking out here for events on the weekends.
Well, let me, we have, we're requesting several variants like that. So the parking variance, subject to discussion, is nineteen, we need, we're short by nineteen spaces.
Yes.
Twenty-two. Twenty-two, but you're going to have to explain to the engineer about this mixed-use reduction.
It's more of a shared use.
Well, that's, they want testimony related to that, so that's something you'll have to address.
So I have a question about the spaces in front of the loading area, those parking spaces, are you counting those as spaces?
Yes, because we're assuming that the loading's going to be oftentimes when, because we can't have loading going on during an event, so they'll have to come in, they'll load...
You're going to have caterers coming in and out, you're going to have lots of...
It's going to have to be, it's going to be done before the event starts.
So if your, second question, you're assuming, or you're counting, on available parking on the north side of Elizabeth Street, so presuming you have a full night, you have people over there, they're going to be crossing Elizabeth Street.
Yes.
You're going to have patrons crossing the streets, are there any provisions for crosswalks or traffic control across Elizabeth Street right there?
There's a crosswalk at the intersection of Route One, across, you know, at Elizabeth Street, there's a crosswalk that continues across from, because we just put a new sidewalk in for the Holiday Inn. And I believe when we had done the Holiday Inn Express, it was a proposal to have sidewalk meander through this property, and, and so people could be led to the shopping center. So we've always had a proposed crossing coming from the Holiday Inn Express over across to this property.
And the shaded, the shaded area represents what exactly, the, the light gray shade?
The light gray, that's the pavement.
That's the pavement that is being replaced, or new construction?
That's new construction, yes.
Bill, let me ask you just before, just some more questions here. Go over the parking again. How much parking is in each of the two hotels, and how much parking is for the event center? And without sharing, just explain, how many have you got in each location?
Currently, there's eighty-five parking spaces on State Bridge.
Yes.
There's eighty-one spaces at the Holiday Inn Express.
Okay. And how many at the event center?
Across the front, there'll be fifty-seven.
No, that's sharing.
Correct.
He said without sharing.
Right, and so the question was, Mr. Andrews asked a question, how do we come up with the one-forty-seven? The one-forty-seven required, we know how that is. Where are we getting the one-twenty-eight from, that brings us to the nineteen parking space variance?
There's sixty-seven spaces currently along the side of the State Bridge and to the rear. There's another fifty-seven that we're proposing across the front, that gets us to one-twenty-four. Based on the North Brunswick ordinance, they require a certain amount of car charging stations. So we're proposing four, which I believe is three percent of what's required, you have out there. With the ordinance, I believe it allows you to double up on those spaces, so that one-twenty-four could become one-twenty-eight.
But the one-twenty-eight proposed does not include any parking spaces from either of the hotels. Is that correct?
The one-twenty-eight is for the event center and the State Bridge.
And the State Bridge?
Correct.
Not the Holiday Inn Express?
Correct, the Holiday Inn Express is on...
So, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm going to throw out my understanding of what I'm seeing, and some questions that our engineers have. If I look at site plan comments, A, considerations or recommendations, there's two notes, one and two. Our engineers have asked a clarification in the discrepancy from note one, but that's, that's something that they can get, you can get into and explain to them. But based on the calculations, they're saying here that required parking is calculated at one-hundred-and-forty-seven parking spaces. Note two, they do a reduction of twenty percent mixed-use parking reduction, they come up with, again, one-hundred-and-forty-seven spaces. The only new spaces that are being provided in this application are the ones that are in the front. And factually, you're using some of the spaces that are already in existence for the State Bridge Suites in, in your calculation. The fourteen in the front is actually, those fourteen factor into the eighty-four. There's some, there's some of those, like you show just graphically, one, two, three, and then you cut one, and then there's one. The additional spaces that you're showing within that fourteen and thirty-four, those act spaces, actually, if you add them up, and add them to the side parking, that adds up to the eighty-four. So there's, there's actually less in the front than what you're showing. But factually, from what I see on this site, the only thing you're adding would be, and if we take it at face value, you're adding nine, fourteen, and thirty-four. The other parking is, to answer Mr. Stahl's question, it's a duplication. You're using this parking on the side, basically in dual use. You're using it for fo, for the State Bridge Suites, and you're using it at the same time for the event center.
Yes.
Yes.
The client has shared, that would be tested by two, but Mr. Ray, has shared parking, which is allowed in other districts of the township, but not in this district. So, if the State Bridge and Holiday Inn Express cease to exist, how many parking space is that at the client, at the center?
All together?
Just the event center. So in other words, they're not, they're not here, or you do not have shared access, there's a divorce and friendship, or someone else buys them. And that event center exists, how many parking space are there, forty, forty-seven?
Across on the event center property?
Yeah, so if it's just the event center.
I think, you're probably, I think we're adding thirty-nine, so probably even a little less than that on their property.
Just on that property.
But we, we're going to need an access easement, because the driveway that comes into, into this, into the event center comes through the State Bridge property. So we'll need to be able to have access through there, which there'll be cross-access easements.
And that happens, if any of these lots are sold, they'll be subject to a cross-parking, cross-access easement, which include the right to park.
I mean, just...
I think that was in the CME report.
Well, that's something I think you need to clarify for engineer, for our engineer, and... and, I mean, looking at a satellite image, the first fourteen spaces in the front, coming from in the driveway to the right, if you came in the driveway to the right, those first fourteen spaces are already there.
Correct.
And they already add to this. But, I mean, you're showing fourteen as, as if it's new, maybe it's just a bad, you know, bad CAD drawing or something.
Well, there, existing-wise, on the Staybridge site, there's eighty-five parking spaces.
Correct, and.
So, the one-hundred-and-twenty-four from eighty-five, we're adding thirty-nine.
Right, okay. But I don't know that that still answers the question, are we using parking spaces for two purposes concurrently? And how, I, I don't know with this mixed-use reduction, whether it's fifteen or twenty percent, how that factors in, maybe you guys can explain it.
Well, that's gonna be part of Mr. Watson's analysis, because I forget how many rooms there are at the Staybridge, was there eighty-five at the Staybridge?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four spaces, eighty-four rooms and eighty-five parking spaces. So, that would mean, in order to have a problem there, everyone who comes to the Staybridge would have their own car, and they're not only using Uber, or Lyft, or Public, or, or the shuttle. And that, that's part of the analysis that Mr. Ray's gonna do and consult with Mr. Watson.
Well, I just think that's what needs to be testified to as to how does that work?
No, we are, so that's, that's why we have the eminent, the preeminent, Mr. Traubman or Mr. Ray and Mr. Watson on behalf of the township. Mr. Lane is not a traffic engineer, he's designed it, but the, over the parking issue, I can tell you, Mr. Traubman and Mr. Ray spent a lot of time designing it and considering all of the shared uses.
But, I mean, they don't, what's there to design?
I mean.
They're already there, there's nothing to design.
Well, yes, no, but there is.
But it's already there, you're just borrowing from one another.
Yeah, just, just.
I'm not saying it doesn't work, but I'm just saying.
Just, just.
See, that's, I'm sorry, but see, that's not fair. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna create a plan, and, and part of it is shared parking, and shared parking contemplates that in the weekends, except for the five home games, if that's gonna happen, that on weekends, there's gonna be a forty percent reduction in use of parking spaces on both of those sites. And that's gonna, no, no, that's gonna make up the nineteen spaces. I mean, we tried, I will tell you, to get off-site parking from a number of, of local businesses near the site, and I don't know, they, they were a little, they didn't wanna give it to us. But it's interesting, I mean, Jay or John are gonna give you the, you know, the skinny.
Should we go to traffic?
Yeah, can, could you, I think it's, I think it's just a little, it's a little bit confusing, because on your, on your minor, on your minor subdivision plan or your geometry plan, the fifty-seven spaces that you showed that are in gray, right, they're not fifty-seven new spaces, so I, just to get clarification, because that's what Mr. Andrews was asking.
Yeah, I think there's, there's thirty-nine additional new spaces.
So, thirty-nine of those fifty-seven are, are, are new, so if you took eighteen, when you added, you see twenty-eight, okay, sixty, sixty-seven, and the, okay, that's what gets you to the eighty-five.
Eighty-five, yes.
Okay, so that's, that's a little, it makes it a little bit confusing, because you're gray, it looks like they're new spaces, and everybody's trying to figure out where are the, where are all the spaces? It, it seemed like you were counting them twice, you're not counting them twice, you know, maybe, why, I'm just curious, why is that whole area gray? Because you're reservicing it or?
We're realigning, we're realigning it, so it gets around, yeah.
You're realigning them, so that's why those eighteen spaces.
Yeah, that's going to be new pavement.
That's why they show, okay, so that's part of the confusion, that eighteen of those spaces are there and they're shown as gray because they've reconfigured it. But I think that's what's adding to some of the confusion.
And just.
And when I started the whole presentation, I said, it is confusing, and we have to, you know, give you all the answers for the parking. No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, just to let you know, again, to go back to what I was saying before, I came out on Friday and Saturday night and inspected the Staybridge parking, and on Friday night, there was twenty-five vehicles in that lot. Of the eighty-five spaces, it was twenty-five. Saturday, there was only twenty. You could even look at the aerial here and count the cars, there's twenty-six spaces in the lot, even when this aerial was shot. And you'll hear more from the traffic engineer, but there's never really to seem to be that full of a lot, especially on the weekends.
I mean, because one of the issues that will occur is there's a nice big parking lot next door, and if people come out and it's jammed up and they can't get in, the first thing they're gonna do is go over and park in the business lot next door.
And they have to take your way? And if they want, the businesses want to restrict it, I mean, I tried to, to require rights, it's a natural, we were gonna pay them, you know, for that parking area, and they were not interested. Right? No, we know that's gonna happen, and if they don't like it, they're gonna have to post it. I'm not trying to be sarcastic. No, it's an issue that we're trying to get you the right answer. There were, there are several other variances, Bill. There was a variance for the retaining wall, is that correct?
Yes, and the retaining walls along the side of the building to the north, so in order to get a reasonable size event center and have a good floor plan, we pushed out to the max of where we can with the wetlands, so we had to construct a wall along that north side. We're ten feet off from the building, so per ordinance, we can only be a third of that height, so it's roughly about three-point-three feet. We're at, at our max is like six and a half, so we're, we're exceeding that by, by two. But again, because of the wetlands and our compactness, we've given up three acres in the back to the conservation easement, we have, you know, in order to keep that walkway up, up at floor level, we need a wall that high.
So, that would be along the sidewalk?
Yes.
And although this will come up later, this one, Mr. Plisconka did raise the issue of the sanitary, so we may have to put a pump on the sanitary because of the, the depth of the line, am I correct?
Correct.
But that's not a major issue, it's not a variance issue.
No.
I wanna give Mr. Plisconka credit for that.
Any other questions, or should we go to traffic?
Mr. Stoll, there's a lot more engineering items in the report, are you gonna?
And we're gonna go through, you know, when you're ready, or the board's ready, we'll go through.
Is there anything, let's go through what you're not agreeing with, or what you have an issue with?
I think, we, let me, I'll tell you, let me just see, I don't think there are many, Bill, let me just, since we can. Going to page five, Bill. I think we, we have no problem with any of that on page five, am I correct?
Yeah, any of the ones that I think were in there, that I highlighted, we touched on.
Going to page six, grading drains and stormwater, you agreed to all of those items, one through six, and the areas above that. In fact, we already have the, I mean, we have the NJDEP and DNR already?
DNR, we just resubmitted to them, DEP, we do have.
All right, and going to page seven, number seven and eight, and all of the items under utility comments, one through eight, and nine, we agree, and that's where also in the cases, a grease trap.
Correct.
Going to traffic circulation and parking, I will leave that open with the permission of the board, Mr. Watson, Mr. Plisconka, since that will be a discussion item. Landscape comments, Roman numeral eight, page eleven, A one through five, and lighting comments, one through three. We can resolve all of that, am I correct?
Yes.
And going to page twelve, of course, when we get all of those agency approvals, and we get the, our fair share, et cetera. So, really, quite honestly, we've accepted everything in there, subject to our, our discussion with Mr. Watson, is that fair to say?
Yes, and just let, let the board know, we do have our DEP wetlands permit, we have our freehold soil, and we have an exemption from Middlesex County.
Would it, is it possible between now and the next hearing to address these items?
Sure.
I'm sorry, you want, you want to just clean up some of the comments?
Yeah, rather than just, just hold them till, you know, the board makes a decision, if we could address them between now and the next hearing, we can clean up this report a little bit.
That'd be awesome.
Assuming, assuming we don't get through all the testimony tonight, if we get through, if we get through all the testimony tonight, then, right, unless there's something that couldn't be conditioned.
Yeah.
What, what's, how late are we sitting tonight, Mr. Chairman?
We're here.
Two-thirty.
No, I mean, I have, the architect will be brief, and then John Ray.
I think we bring traffic up now, because I think.
Want to do traffic now?
I, I agree with the chairman, traffic's an issue, not that we don't wanna hear from the architect, but I, you got Mr. Ray here now, why don't you put him on, because there's been questions percolating about that.
I've already said, the architect was beautiful.
Mr. Garrett, you know, the few times I've argued with you, I don't remember winning. No, no, that's, challenges, I understand.
Sir, could you state your name and spell it for the record?
John Wright, R-E-A.
And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, Mr. Ray, just tell you, your, your education, I wanna make sure where you went, your.
Yeah, I went to NJIT too, but it was New York College of Engineering back in those days. I have an undergraduate degree from NCE back in nineteen-seventy-four in civil engineering, a master's degree in transportation engineering from NYU, which was then Brooklyn Polytech, and I've been a licensed professional engineer here in the state of New Jersey since nineteen-eighty-four.
We'll accept you.
I've been here before, but it's been a long time, so, thank you.
May I, I guess that you accept him as a, as a.
Absolutely, we'll accept him.
Thank you.
Okay, John.
Okay, well, I'm gonna start with the parking, rather, I'm gonna get into the traffic as well, too, because parking seems to be the issue, and I wanna tell you what we've done to prepare for tonight, what I've heard from the board tonight, and I think an issue has been raised, which we have to give a little bit more thought to. We did do parking observations, they weren't.
You jumped, and then I won't interrupt again.
Sure you will.
Jim, I have some copies, although I, of the report, to be productive or not productive, to distribute these to the board, it's up to you.
Oh, that's up to the board, they, they.
Now, I have some information that Mr. Ray had done.
Can't kill a tree for nothing, though.
Mr. Chairman, we generated comments in our letter, and this evening, they provided, they handed responses to a few of our traffic comments, so this is the first information we've received to respond to our comments.
I get a note, I'll be, I'll come back. I don't like him.
So, you didn't bring enough for every member?
Well, I did, but I think three away already. I may have enough, Mr. Ray, see, before you spoke.
I was reading your mind.
Mr. Sheriff, we need to, thank you.
And you get, how about that? You have now, and.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stoll.
What? You'd like a document, then Mr. Lewis, then that's the sheriff.
I can think of one. I'm not.
You have to wrestle me down.
Mr. Counsel, can we just mark that as A three? Since we've got, I think we've got A one, A two, can I mark the report of McDonough and Ray dated, well, it's a response to January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty? Can we mark that as A three?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so what Mr. Stoll has handed out to the board members is just a memo that my partner Jay and I put together to assist in our testimony tonight, to explain to the board and to Mr. Watson what our responses are to the issues that were raised in the CME report. We had actually wanted to do a full written response to Mr. Watson and Mr. Plisconka to cover those items. This was basically just to guide me through my testimony tonight, but you've got the numbers, and they basically speak for themselves. We did a series of parking counts back in April of twenty-seventeen and, and April twenty-eighteen, and we did do some detailed parking counts on a Friday and a Saturday evening at the Staybridge. We did detailed counts every half an hour from six PM to nine PM, and if you look at those numbers, you can see they are consistent with the testimony that Mr. Lane gave regarding the counts that he, he did, I think it was last weekend, at both the Staybridge and the Holiday Inn Express. But you see a consistent, on Friday and Saturday evenings, you see a consistent parking demand of between twenty and twenty-seven vehicles at the Staybridge. So, looking at these numbers and the available parking that we have within the Staybridge lot that we can use for the event center, and knowing that we're technically nineteen spaces short, the balance of the parking supply in the Staybridge Suites will be adequate to handle even a maximum-capacity event at the event center on a typical weekend evening, a Friday or a Saturday. I have come to that conclusion. However, I heard today, and I, it just dawned on me, too, that, you know, there may be some heavier parking demands associated with, with football in the fall, when, you know, Big Ten teams come in to play Rutgers. I'm assuming they probably have five home games in the Big Ten, they probably play one or two outside of the conference, so there could potentially be five weekends during the year, when the Big Ten teams that come in to play Rutgers have fans that use the hotels in the area, and I, I could see that potentially being something that we have to deal with. We're coming back to another meeting, I would just like the opportunity to discuss that issue with my client, figure out a plan that we can put forward. I think Ms. Corville answered the question as best as she could, I think there is some control over, you know, booking the rooms, and if the rooms are booked for, you know, Ohio State fans or Michigan fans that are gonna be in for a weekend, they're not gonna be able to do a big event that weekend. But I think, you know, we need to talk about that a little bit more, I think perhaps a valet operation on those weekends might be something that would be beneficial. So, I'd like to have an opportunity to discuss that with my client and go over that, and have a better answer for you at, at the next meeting. With respect to the traffic, I, the other thing I just wanted to touch on as far as the NJDOT permits are concerned, we are going to use the existing driveway at the Staybridge Suites. We've run the trip generation numbers based on the NJDOT's trip rates for a banquet facility, and the highest peak hour would be the weekend peak hour, we will generate an additional eighty-three peak hour trips on a Friday or Saturday night, according to the NJDOT data. And because that number is less than the one-hundred trips that's required in order to get a new permit, we will qualify for a letter of no interest from the NJDOT, we will apply for that letter of no interest, we will obtain that and, and make it part of the record. That's really all I have for this evening.
You're not gonna talk about circulation on-site at all?
I can, but I think Mr. Lane might, you know, he designed it, and, I mean, it, it looks pretty sound and logical to me, Tom, I, you know, unless there's something specific, I don't see anything out of the ordinary, as far as parking stall sizes, the aisle widths, everything is.
The question I had.
Basically what it should be.
On the circulation was, and it's a, the minute thing really, but the arrow that, if you're coming into the site, you can only come in off Route One at the existing entrance, which you're testifying that.
Correct.
You're not applying for any new permit or any change to that. So, if you make a right going in there, if you're gonna drop somebody off in front of the event center, you certainly, are you gonna make a turn to come around, and, because the arrow in front of that points back towards the exit area?
That's exactly why, and this is one of the comments that's in the CME review letter, you'll see there's kind of a gentle curve, the roadway is a little bit curvilinear. That was purposely done that way to provide for the turning radius for a vehicle to swing into the port of char, to drop people off.
Okay, you think people are really gonna do that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and I, I get the access gate is only for use at times when people would be leaving an event, and it's angled in such a way there that you're doing, looking to discourage them from making a right turn there, you want them to go out and, and proceed, I guess, what is that, west?
It would be back to the west on Elizabeth Street, so they could get to the parking lot at the Holiday Inn Express.
And they can't come in that way?
They can't come in that way. That's the intent of angling the driveway and having it gated, yes.
Okay, and, and the radius now coming in with the parking spaces that are existing, which is the first fourteen or so off to the right, they, that radius works already?
Yes. Okay.
John, I don't know whether, I mean, you discussed the effectiveness of a shared parking. You did, I wanna make it clear, I mean, what is your analysis as to the workability of the shared parking for the two hotels and the event center?
I, I, based on the counts that we've done and the counts that Mr. Lane did, on a typical weekend, I have no concern about us not having enough parking spaces for an event at the event center. There will be a surplus, probably even on, at a maximum-capacity event, I could still I could still see a surplus of 20 to 30 spaces just in the Staybridge lot and the new parking spaces that we're creating for the event center. I'm not sure we'll ever need parking from the Holiday Inn Express.
Lou, I know John did this, but on your page number nine, you have an item number four, which talks about, I guess, the calculated parking that, I guess, their engineer did. Are you saying you agree with that, that basically the spaces that we have here, even with the co-mingled parking, that that would work?
No, we were actually looking for testimony from the applicant's engineer. One question I do have on the counts that were done. Do you know what the occupancy was in the hotel when you did those counts?
I probably could check with my client. We'll have to find out. That's something we might be able to report back to you next week. I would assume the occupancy was basically what the number of cars that were in the parking lot. So, if there were 26 cars in the parking lot, I would assume that 26 of the 80... 85 rooms were filled. I would assume the occupancy matches the parking count, so I think it's... That's the percentage.
Well, yeah. I'm glad you asked that question, Lou, because if the occupants... If the number of cars matches the occupancy, that means that the Staybridge is only 25% occupied on weekends?
On a typical weekend, that's the case, Mr. Vigna. I believe that to be the case.
Ms. Corville, is that... Can you... You're only 25% occupancy on weekends at the Staybridge?
I think you had said 50, right?
I was going to say, yeah.
Ms. Corville, why don't you come up?
Yeah.
I think, you know, during the meeting, I heard testimony that they are basically business hotels and... Tom, let me back up just for a second. We did count, like, on Wednesday, April 19th at 7:00 p.m. This was a weekday. We did count 55 cars, twice as many cars in the parking lot. That was a business, you know, event. It was a weekday. So, I think it... I think what she was trying to say is essentially these hotels are busier during the week for business people.
You know, I don't think any... We would disagree with that, but I think we originally said...
Yeah, that was original.
Business during the week and 50% on the weekends, but...
Is that correct?
40 or 50%, because we have Amtrak staying with us, and they don't have any vehicles.
So, Amtrak occupies a significant number of rooms all year long?
Yes, they do.
And then if they weren't here, do you have other corporate clients who booked the hotels?
Yes, we do.
Is there any other... I mean... In your experience, where else... Where else is something like this working? Because, I mean, that's a difficult question, but we were...
Yeah. Shared parking works in a number of different scenarios. They could all be a little bit different. A lot of... We're doing a lot of parking and traffic studies for mixed-use projects now that have, for example, office space and residential space co-mingled. And because the residential parking peaks late in the evening, after 10:00 in the evening, when the office space is not needed, it works. I'm trying to think of an example where there's shared parking involving a hotel. And the one that I can think of is up by Woodbridge Center, there's a Sheridan, and there's a big office building that's shared parking. And in spite of the fact it's always very busy up there, I've got a client that's in the office building up there. You can always find parking. That's an example of where the shared parking works.
Are you familiar with Town Center in North Brunswick?
I'm not. My partner Jay is.
No, I think that's a shared... I'm not sure how that works, but I think the ordinance permits shared parking.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's... The Sheridan is a good example, because I've been there. I've also been there during a driving brainstorm or snow. But my question, my... It's marketing 101, it's not our problem. But I'm thinking to myself, my wife needs... Has a nice gown on, her dress on, and she needs to walk from one of those hotel parking lots to the convention center. She's not going to be happy once you get there. And that's not our problem.
You'd be a gentleman, and you'd drop her off in the front, and then you'd go park and walk through the rain.
You would make that turnaround.
If you could get through the gate.
That's rich.
We may want to, after Mr. Watson and Mr. Ray get together. Maybe there will be occasions when we want to do a valet. Quite honestly, we didn't think that the board would be crazy about that alternative as the partial solution, but we've been wrong before. So, we could dial up a certain number of patrons or the size of the event and say, you guys have to have a...
I don't know if that's a condition of the board, but as you park on the other streets there, where it's not allowed, and guests come out and the cars are no longer there.
We were using LA Parkings, we were able to use Commerce Center. We tried the office, we tried, which had plenty of space in the back. We tried some of the other areas, and they just weren't interested.
You need to find a local... There's no churches on... Churches are always welcome to make an extra dollar if you don't think...
Oh, you're right. So, before, we went through all of these items. But I guess we didn't go through each one of the conditions or that you need to agree to or discuss related to the traffic and circulation. Is that appropriate for...
We agreed to defer that. Well, if Mr. Ray wants to do that, I mean, I'm...
I can go through those items. I was hoping to have a sit-down with Mr. Watson, but on page eight, under traffic circulation and parking comments, looking at item number one, it deals with the NJDOT's Highway Access Management Code. And as I've indicated, I believe we qualify for a letter of no interest based on the additional traffic we will generate, and we will apply for the letter of no interest and get that from the NJDOT. Item two deals with the intersection of Elizabeth Street and Route 1. And that item deals with getting a DOT approval, which, quite frankly, due to the nature of our application and the fact that we qualify for a letter of no interest, there's no requirement to get a DOT approval for the Elizabeth Street intersection. Technically, the township holds that permit, because it's a township road. But, you know, since we're applying for a letter of no interest, there's no need to get a permit, a new permit for that intersection. Same thing basically goes with items 2A, B, and C. They all relate to level of service standards that are in the Highway Access Code. And the only time that they would be applicable would be if we applied for a new permit. And if we had to apply for a new permit, we'd have to meet those standards. But because we're going to get a letter of no interest, I do not believe they're really applicable.
Can I just go back for a second to the gate? So, the way this looks is if you were releasing people out of that gate, you're basically heading directly into the oncoming lane of Elizabeth that's heading towards Route 1? Does that make sense?
Well, they would... There would be a stop sign there, and they would have to wait for a gap in that traffic before they could make the left to get into the westbound lane. Yeah, I understand what you're saying. It's angled to kind of...
Directly into the lane almost. I mean, it...
Understood.
Currently, I don't believe there's any signage on that driveway that indicates do not enter or arrows on how, you know, exit only. So, I think you, at a minimum, you'd have to add that.
Okay.
I do agree the angle is somewhat odd. I mean, one of our comments was really looking to see if you wanted to have it intersect at 90 degrees. And I think you might not have the room, or the dumpster is in the way there, so...
Yeah, we didn't want to encourage people to make the right turn and head out towards Route 1, so we wanted to angle it to force people to go back. But I will look at that with Mr. Lane. We'll come up with some signage. And again, the intent was to only open that exit. You know, it was going to be gated all the time unless there was an event. And if there was an event, the gate would be open to let people exit out onto Elizabeth. In the event, they were staying at the Holiday Inn across the street, so they wouldn't have to use Route 1.
I would agree, though.
Someone exit, make the right through Route 1. Safety issue?
You would.
The driveway would only be about... The driveway would only be about 35 feet from the intersection.
Right, we don't need that, Mr. Vigna. We don't want it.
You're doing 55 miles an hour down Route 1, and you're going to have cars... I mean, I think that's why...
Just ask the question.
No, I'm just saying, I think that's why John Kreskowski, going back to early days when there was meetings on that, might have suggested it couldn't intersect at a 90-degree angle that closer. That could be dangerous.
But the problem is, and this happens all the time, we approve... I'll use the bank as an example, okay? We approved an application at the bank. Pat brings this up all the time. We can't enforce it. You go out of the bank. We have it set up such that when you pull out of that bank, you're only supposed to make a right-hand turn, and you're not supposed to make a left-hand turn in. And we had the both entrances and exits angled in such way. Well, the first thing they did was they took that whole thing out, okay, at one point. And I pointed it out to Tom, so we made him put it back in. But I see people all the time that come from George's Road, come in and make a left into that bank, and then they pull out, and they're not supposed to make a left. They make a left going back the other way. And if you're going to tell me that all these people going out of this event that want to go on Route 1 and go south, that they're going to not do some crazy angular turnaround and go out to Route 1, it's just... It's not going to happen.
There's no one on that street. It's real, I mean, that's...
We've looked at this, and if the board's uncomfortable with that access out to Elizabeth Street, we'll make it an emergency vehicle access only.
There is a restriction, though, from an intersection of how far back you can... You could do that, isn't that correct?
I believe at one point in time, because this has been... There've been meetings going on for the last year and a half, probably at least on it. And there was... I know there was concern, I believe, that if you couldn't get out that way, if somebody came down and there was no parking, they would have to turn around and go the way back, where this way they could go through and possibly, because it was same ownership, go and take advantage of parking in the Holiday Inn.
Well, this gives them the opportunity to go north, okay? The other way, if everybody was going out of the entrance and exit, they have to go to the next controlled intersection to turn around and go north, which isn't a bad thing. But, I mean, maybe you just eliminate that 100%.
But it also got... Also lined you up, Ralph, if they pulled out there where they could just turn into the... They could then... If they couldn't find parking, they could just turn into the Holiday Inn parking lot.
That was the intent.
If they're not staying at one of the hotels, so we're just putting... I mean, there could be 50, 60 people now at an event. And we're putting them on the Harlem Commons, and we're putting through Andrews Racetrack way there, and we're back... I mean, to get back to Route 1, I don't know.
Well, I get with Tom's. If they wanted to go to the Holiday Inn.
The roadway between the Shabbat Center and Walmart. It's not a real road, but it works.
And if they want to go south, they would go out the other exit, probably.
No, my question...
So, what would have to happen if that... I mean, since you're talking about coming back anyway, maybe it's worth exploring again whether you could get a 90-degree angle intersection out there without a problem with DOT, which I believe there would be a problem with DOT letting a driveway come out there like 35 feet from the intersection. But assuming they didn't, that's one alternative. The other alternative is closing it, you know, closing it off. And then this is a third... This is a third alternative where you could get out, you know, so... But maybe that's...
I think what you said earlier, though, is if you went there and you couldn't find a parking space, and the alternative is to go over to the Holiday Inn, that's the only way you're going to get there.
Yeah. There was discussions, I can tell you, a year and a half ago when this first discussed. Boy, everybody's going to dead-end there if it's really busy. Then you'd have to make accommodations for cars to be able to do K-turns and back out, just to turn around and try and find parking.
Mr. Vigna, we do have, and I looked at this with Mr. Lane, we do have an alternative plan. In the event the board wanted that driveway closed, we can cross-hatch an area over there so that a car has a place to make a K-turn and turn around, if that was the board's desire to just have it be an emergency access. But you're right, the intent was to try to let people who couldn't find a parking space, get them out onto Elizabeth Street and go over to the Holiday Inn Express. That was the intent.
Yeah, I get it now. That probably makes sense, as long as, though, as the suggestion is that we have all the appropriate signage.
We'll work that out with...
And if you didn't have that driveway, and you're telling them to park at the Holiday Inn Express, then they have to go out to Route 1 South.
Exactly.
Go down to Commerce, turn around, and come Elizabeth in the back.
Right, I get it.
That was the intent of having...
It makes sense.
Yep.
So, that would be open when there is an event?
Yes.
Prior to the event?
Only when there's an event. That's... That was my understanding. And we talked about the parking as far as the rest of the items and the traffic issues. And the other items are basically dealing with that driveway on Elizabeth Street. And the alignment of that driveway. We would just like to have an opportunity to sit down with Mr. Watson and his staff and work these details out with respect to the signage, the angle of the driveway, to make sure that his office is comfortable with that.
And when you meander the parking lot a little bit so that you've got room to make that swing and pull into the drop-off, when that happens, I guess, the front of the space is required nine feet, and then the spaces just have to flare out a little bit?
Yeah, it was designed... Just we laid a template on the plan to just make sure that a large passenger vehicle can make that swing into the Port of Cachare to drop someone off. That's why we put that little curve in.
Can the limo get in there, or, I mean, the wedding body was coming in?
Depends on how big the limo is.
Was that...
It depends on how big the limo is, Tom, I guess, you know.
So, our comment number nine is really asking for site circulation. We would want to see that...
Okay.
That you can run the auto turn to access the dumpster, and then also... Access the drop-off area.
Okay. You have it, right? I think it's part of your plan, right? Okay, Mr. Lane has an exhibit. I don't know if we'll get to it tonight, but we will demonstrate that activity can take place.
So, a quick question for you, Mr. Stahl.
Yes, sir.
Will your whole team be back during the next meeting?
Yes, sir. We know that.
How does our schedule look for next month?
We have two applications on for next month, but...
Never know.
We want to hear from their architect now, so she doesn't have to come back. I mean, that probably won't be much long, very long tag money.
That's fine. Since it's such a South Cuchita, task of beautiful drawings, I'd like to see it.
Especially the rooftop bar area.
New Jersey Gateway. Cuchita wants you to raise your right hand, please.
Could you state your name and spell it for the record?
Hi, I'm Cuchita Shaw, S-U-C-H-I-T-A, last name Shaw, S-H-A-H.
And do you swear or affirm that your testimony before the board tonight is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Cuchita, you're a licensed New Jersey architect, is that correct?
That's correct. I'm also licensed in four other states now. I'm also licensed in four other states now.
All right, how long have you been licensed in New Jersey?
About two years.
And you've appeared before other boards, have you not?
That's correct.
And you've been qualified as an expert, is that correct?
Yes.
And you learned and worked through a special person in Kamla Shaw, who is a name on the architectural firm, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
I have an accredited B arch degree from Pratt Institute in Brooklyn.
We'll accept it next week.
Thank you.
Could you work... Is it A4?
Four, yeah.
A4 today, okay. Why don't you describe for us...
Sure.
Sorry, could you stand on the other side?
Absolutely.
Is it possible?
So, A4 marked February 11th, 2020, is a rendering, also labeled SCH-4.0. It's a rendering of the southwest corner of the building that is proposed on the site. As you can see, it's a two-story building made of concrete and steel. Well, the shell is concrete and steel. We have aluminum and glass curtain walls on three sides. To add to the aesthetic, we have plenty of wood to kind of warm up the aesthetic, and then obviously some metal to add to create kind of an edgy, modern look. So, I'll just kind of... Jim and Rita did a good job kind of going through the plans, but let me just run through kind of the building as a whole. So, to give you some background, we designed this around the visitor experience, the guest experience. So, the primary customer... So the, the primary customer we designed around was the millennial, and that happens to be anybody like me, born anywhere from 1980 to 1996, who is the next kind of person who's going to book this type of facility or participate in a conference next door. So what the millennial is kind of attracted to is the experience rather than a materialistic look. So we focused on a lot of kind of the outside, because we're all, you know, earth lovers, so we have a lot of, we're taking advantage of the west and south light, natural light, and we are opening up, as you said, the rooftop terrace for nice weather days. And we have a garden out in the back that can also be used on, on great days. So, so the, the inside of the space, I'm just gonna go to the plan, so I'm gonna mark another exhibit, if that's okay. So we're now looking at A5 marked February 11th, 2020, also known as SCH-2.1. This is the ground floor plan laid out on the site. So as you'll see kind of in this plan, when you enter through the vestibule, you're opening up to an atrium that's two stories high. And if you look further down, there's a colonnade hall and what we're calling a cocktail area or pre-function area. Now, all of this is kind of open, and the reason for that is the entire building actually is designed around flexibility and multipurpose space. So designed around, again, 250 occupants, so they can either use the entire building as 250 occupants, or it could be separated into a party of 50 upstairs, you know, 100 downstairs, whatever, whatever they do with that, with that number. The rest, so, so if it comes down to square footage, the footprint of the building is about 9,000 square feet. Only 2/3 of that is usable for the visitors, or what I'll call front-of-house space. Everything else is accessory. That means prep kitchens, staging areas, green rooms, restrooms, elevators, et cetera. So pretty much, the front-of-house includes pre-function areas, that colonnade hall that I mentioned, the lobby, a covered patio back here, an outdoor patio, and upstairs, I'll go to the second floor plan. Sorry. And I'll mark this.
Six.
A6. So A6, February 11th, also known as SCH-2.2, shows, again, the ground floor plan, but also the second floor plan, which you'll see the main hall set up for 250 people exactly, and a pre-function area outside for, you know, grouping before the function or after the function. This plan is set up as one big 250-person hall, but of course, that would be on such an occasion where somebody has booked out the entire building and is, is going to use this, this room to seat everybody.
So that, that room, right now, the way that's laid out, you can get seating for 250 in that one big room?
Yes, and I will admit it's pretty tight, but yes, it is.
Count the tables.
Yeah.
It's exactly that.
We, I mean, this could also, it's, everything is multipurpose and flexible, so this also is showing a foldable partition. It can be used for two smaller functions as well. Yep, but that, that's pretty much the building. What I didn't go over was the rooftop terrace, which is pretty self-explanatory. If it's a nice day out and they say, you know, instead of having the pre-function downstairs or the cocktails downstairs, we'll, we'll take it upstairs, the terrace. You know, that's, that's their prerogative, and I think that it's an exciting experience, so...
Garden patio area as well.
Yes, and there's a garden patio as well. So that's kind of what I was talking about. You, that's like a little bit of a paradise, you know, you, you don't feel like you're on Route One. If, if you go back there and enjoy your cocktail back here on the first floor, and you're looking out, you'll see on Bill's site plan, all these trees back there. So it's actually gonna be a pretty nice space.
How, how much seating could you get on the outdoor bar area on the rooftop?
So we don't, so we're not gonna have any fixed seating. It's all kind of portable furniture. So tops, I would say, like, maybe 20, 30, I mean, and why I say that is because the footprint is sort of the same, but a lot of it is taken up by restrooms up there, the elevators, the freight elevator, that kind of thing. So, so it's really not all usable as guest space.
Very nice. You're right, Mr. Stoll.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She created a problem, though. It's way out of character with the neighborhood.
Well, that's why we, we hope that people will come here for...
So Holiday, the Holiday Inn, this is in general, Holiday probably won't need that parking, right? But there's a...
Right.
Did they, anyone, it is very attractive. I'm sure people would try to find, hey, I want, I want to use that. But anyone ever think of, there's a sidewalk running from Staybridge right over. There's an easy walkway?
I think there's some discussion about the sidewalk. Bill?
I'm just wondering, has anyone ever talked about building a covered walkway there? Not that I'm...
No, no, I think we discussed it sometime, so...
Matter of course, but I'm just wondering.
Well, also, it puts people undercover going from the hotel over there.
Oh, yeah, it goes back to the whole weather situation. Very nice job. Thank you.
It can be done.
Great, thank you.
Can I just ask one, one question? Prob, I guess it's the architect who would ask it. The occupancy based on the seating you showed on that plan is 250, get more up top. What's the occupancy based on the fire, fire code or the building code?
I think one per four, that's very poor.
I mean, 'cause you know, every house of worship in different buildings, there's always an, there's a fire, you know, there's a, there's a, a building code limitation that has nothing to do with the number of seats and stuff.
So if someone has a calculator, the, the main hall is about 61 feet by 81 feet, and you are allowed in this tables and chairs setting 15 square feet per person.
4,800 divided by 15.
Roughly 300 people. But that's, I mean, we're, we're also like trying to get in like a, a dance floor type of thing, some side, sort of buffet setting, maybe.
No, I was just wondering, you know, if that was 500, and you were saying you're gonna limit it to, you know, 250, I could see people taking liberties and saying, well, fire.
We worked back a little bit.
Was that?
We dropped, we worked back. We went from 400 to 50 because we wanted to show a significant reduction and less intense use. Basically, I think, doing a count, I didn't talk to John about it, Kreskowski, we might be able to put 275 or squeeze using some of the formulas, but he had no interest in doing that.
Does anyone else have any questions that are on their mind now? If not, we might as well, we should table this meeting at this point, and...
Everyone will be here at the next meeting.
We'll let the engineer speak.
Ms. Larkin will tell me when the next meeting is.
We don't need the architect back, right? Unless she'd like to, we, there's no more questions about architecture, so unless she really want to come back to the next meeting, I think it would be mostly site circulation and traffic and parking, right? Does she need to come back to the next meeting?
The, the only thing that we didn't cover that, the engineer had some questions about the landscaping and the lighting, because there wasn't a lighting plan.
Yeah, but that wouldn't be the architect. That'd be your site engineer, yeah. So I'm just saying that you said the whole team would come back. I mean, feel free to come back if you'd like to. Your presentation was nice, but don't feel like you have to.
Thank you. Great job. All right, and the motion, we don't need to open it for this application, all right?
Yeah, you gotta open to the public.
Just a motion open to the public for general comments?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Public want to be heard about anything, motion closed.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Mallinson?
Motion, we adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Well, we just want to get a date put on the record. No further notice is required for the adjourned date.
So, yeah, do we need to reopen it, or no? I'm sorry, what was that? So no further, well, the meeting will be...
We're gonna, you'll come back on March 10th.
And no further notice is...
No further notice required.
March 10th. The better date is any, Ms. Larkin?
For you, we changed it. Do you want another date?
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members.